The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Ald-
We're in the meeting now.
Alderman Aldridge, thank you. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Eleven present, you have corn.
A corn being present, we will be led in an open reflection and prayer by Ashley Foley with the Missouri School for the Blind.
When you think of deaf-blind, you most likely think of the wild child Helen Keller. While Helen Keller is a great example of overcoming adversity, her story has skewed public opinion on what deaf-blindness looks like. Only 1% of deaf-blind individuals experience total blindness and total deafness. The young man with cochlear implants and low vision, he can speak and listen, but he is deaf-blind. Your grandfather who wears hearing aids and has cataracts, that is deaf-blind. Down syndrome, cerebral palsy, traumatic brain injuries, and so many other recognizable conditions have vision and hearing components that are often overlooked due to the other complexities involved. I bring this up to emphasize that deaf-blindness is more common than most people realize. Some individuals may go most of their life before realizing they are deaf-blind themselves. I impart this knowledge on you because in the fight for equal access, identification is the first step. I am not deaf-blind, however, I have lived with progressive vision loss my entire life. I could go on all day about the barriers I face on a daily basis. Digital forums that aren't screen reader friendly, restaurants taking orders on non-accessible tablets, Uber drivers that deny access to my service dog, and just uneducated people in the community either being too helpful or underestimating my ability to live an independent life. If I experienced these challenges with just one sensory impairment, imagine the experiences of people with two. The best thing anyone can do to help mitigate these barriers is to first educate themselves. Research all the successful individuals living with deaf-blindness. Harvard graduates, sculptors, restaurant owners, teachers, and so much more. Then research how many deaf-blind individuals are unemployed. The difference in these two categories of people is the amount of support they were given. There is no limit to what a deaf-blind person can accomplish, except for the limits imposed by an unaware society. I am a mom. I am a professional. I have a master's degree. I am a friend, a wife, a sister, a daughter, and so much more, but I am blind. One small detail about my physical condition has been what most people judge me by my entire life. Not because it limits me in any way, but because of a lack of understanding for the city as a whole. With Deaf Blind Awareness Week coming up on June 22nd, I implore all of you to take some time out of your busy schedules and educate yourself on what it means to live with deaf-blindness. Then share what you learned with a friend. It's amazing what a little bit of understanding can accomplish. Thank you so much for having us here today. Not only do I appreciate any opportunity to speak on what I am most passionate about, but it truly shows your dedication to making this city as inclusive to everyone.
Thank you. With that, we will dispense with the regular order of business to take up the courtesy resolution calendar. Alderman from the 14th, you're recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolutions 38 through 41.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules to introduce Resolution 38 through 41.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 38 to 41. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Thank you. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 14th. Madam Clerk, if you could please place Resolutions 38 to 41 at the end of the courtesy resolution calendar.
So noted.
With that, I want to ask for the Alderwoman from the 6th to approach the dais with your special guest for the presentation of Resolution 40.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, can you please read Resolution 40?
Resolution 40 honoring the 2025 Deaf Blind Awareness Week and Marcus Velazquez Award recipient Marilyn Ferguson. Whereas, Deaf Blind Awareness Week observed annually during the last week of June in 2025, from June 22nd through June 28th, in honor of Helen Keller's birthday on June 22nd, promotes public understanding of individuals with combined hearing and vision loss and recognizes their unique experiences, needs, and contribution to society. Whereas, raising public awareness is essential to fostering understanding, empathy, and inclusion for individuals who are deaf-blind, who often face significant barriers in communication, mobility, access to service, and such awareness efforts can drive improvements in accessibility, support service, and community integration. Whereas, the Missouri School of Blind located in the 6th Ward, established in 1851 and operated by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, provides free statewide educational and outreach services to children from birth through age 21 who are blind, visually impaired, or deaf-blind, including Missouri's own-only K-12 residential program for students with visual disabilities. And whereas Missouri School for the Blind has played a national significant role in advancing accessibility and inclusion, becoming the first institution in the United States to adopt Braille in 1870 and pioneering the use of Braille printing presses, thereby expanding educational opportunity and dependence for generations of students. Whereas, Marcus Velazquez, born 1970, was a proud graduate of the Missouri School for Blind and a student of the Helen Keller National Center, where he developed the life skills that allowed him to live and work independently in St. Louis region, relying on tactile signs, language, a white cane, and a fanny pack filled with essentials that symbolizes his adventures, nature, and determination. Whereas, the Marcus Velazquez Service Award is presently annually, presented annually by the Missouri Deaf Blind Project and the Velazquez family. Traditionally, to professionals whose work has profoundly impacted the deaf-blind community in the state of Missouri, but now to siblings of the individuals with deaf-blindness, siblings who critically import quiet work often goes unrecognized. Whereas Marilyn Ferguson, at just 11 years old, demonstrated extraordinary passionate strength and maturity in caring for her younger sister Sophia, who was deaf-blind and lived with multiple complex medical conditions, treating her with partnership, love, fierce sibling, and loyalty. Whereas Marilyn never saw her sister's disability as a barrier, but instead ensured Sophia was always included, playing games like rock-paper-scissors, helping at school and at home, and treating her with the same joyful spirit and expectation any sister would, making sure Sophia's world was filled with dignity, delight, and care. Whereas, as defined by the National Center on Deaf Blindness, deaf-blindness is a condition in which the combination of hearing and visual losses in children and youth causes such severe complication in other developmental and educational needs that they cannot be accommodated in special educational programs solely for children with deafness or children with blindness. Whereas, according to the National Library Surface for the Blind and Deaf, over 10,000 children, over 40,000 adults in the United States have deaf-blindness, a condition that often comes alongside other cognitive and physical disabilities. Whereas, deaf-blind neighbors have wholly unique experience of the world, one that presents challenges but also makes them an incredible gift. Helen Keller, a world-famous disabilities rights, women's rights, and social activist and co-founder of the American Civil Liberties Union, was deaf-blind. And whereas, Marcus Velazquez achieved a full education at the Helen Keller National Center in Sands Point, New York, after graduating from the Missouri School for Blind and went on to work and live independently in the St. Louis area after dying of cancer on July 4th, 1997. Whereas, inspired by her sister's life, Marilyn inspires to become a doctor to help other children like Sophia, already showing a profound sense of empathy, emotional intelligence, recognizing that every child, regardless of disability, deserves to be heard, seen, and supported as the whole person they are. Whereas Sophia Ferguson, born with Dandy Walker Syndrome and facing significant mental complications, including intractable epilepsy, epilepsy, hydrocephalus with a VP stunt, coracal visual impairment, and ventilator dependency, lived her life as a true warrior, radiant spirit, resilience, and determination, and inspiring all who met her. Whereas Sophia's life reached far beyond her immediate community, touching countless lives through her family's public storytelling and unwavering advocacy, showing the world that disabilities is not a sentence but a different kind of strength. Whereas Sophia passed away on May 10th, 2025, due to complications from influenza, and is lovingly remembered by her sister Marilyn and her devoted parents Cassandra and Jaren Ferguson, whose tireless care and unconditional love continue to honor Sophia's life and legacy. Now therefore be resolved by this honorable Board of Aldermen of the St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize the incredible support Marilyn gave to her deaf-blind sibling and to commemorate her achievement of receiving the 2025 Marcus Velazquez Service Award, we further direct the clerk of the board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceeding and prepare a commemorative copy, such it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor, introduced this 13th day of June 2025 by the Honorable Daniela Velazquez, Alderwoman of the 6th Ward.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. First, I just want to say thank you, Ashley, for your words. I don't talk about my brother a whole lot, but one of the beautiful things about serving the 6th Ward is that I actually remember going to the blind when he was there. And the stories that you told about how you framed it, about really its society's limitations that we place on people versus their abilities, really was my brother. I've shared some stories with some of you that are true of him, taking the L train downtown in Chicago by himself, going to order a hamburger in Mexico in the 90s with his fanny pack and writing about what he wanted to order. And he lived independently, and so was an advocate, I think, about that he wouldn't have been able to do those things without the support that as a policymaker that we can give them. And so it's really special to me, and I'm very grateful for all the folks at Missouri School for the Blind who continue to honor my brother and his legacy, but also to Marilyn and Cassandra and Jaren and their family that we can honor Sophia's memory. And one of the greatest gifts, I think, that you can give, that you gave Sophia, was the ability to feel love and feel like she belonged, and often so many times, society's restrictions on what we think people can do, we don't always do that. So with that, if Marilyn or Cassandra would like to say a few words, or 60, or 11, or how many words you'd like, or 16, I'm gonna give you this mic over here.
Thank you. I would like to be a doctor because of my sister and... Um, that's really it. Nice day!
I just want to thank you guys for recognizing her. She goes above and beyond. She doesn't think she deserves this, but she does. And thank you for acknowledging our daughter's memory. It was a hard passing, but she will always be alive in our hearts and as well as everybody's hearts that she has impacted, which was a lot more than what we had ever anticipated. And thank you guys for today.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the board. I just want to know if I can be there when you walk across the stage and get your doctors, get your white coat as a doctor. Congratulations, Alderwoman Velazquez. Thank you for sharing. It's always different opportunities for us to bond with our colleagues in different ways, but today I feel a little closer to you. So thank you for the work that you're doing and standing up in the gap in the legacy of your brother. Thank you all for all you all continue to do. Just know that I'm sure, I'm not only speaking for myself, when I say you have all of our support down here in advocacy and action. And with that, I'd like to ask that we move Resolution 40 in bank.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we make Resolution 40 in bank. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 40 is now in bank. That means that every member of the board has signed the code. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you. I just want to thank Alderwoman Velazquez for bringing this forward today, and Marilyn, you know, for your service here, and to just everybody out there who either experiences, you know, blindness, deafness, or blind, deaf-blindness, and everyone who is out there helping them. I think some of my colleagues know that when I was in college, I worked for a blind man at the city of Bloomington in the legal department there. That means I worked for a blind man who was a lawyer, had gone to law school and worked his way through law school using Braille, which is incredible and unto itself. And he lived a very full life and still is serving the city of Bloomington today. But on his way in that journey, he played in blues bands and traveled the country as a drummer. He's just done incredible things. So shout out to George if he's out there listening, because I think about you often. When you work with somebody who is experiencing any kind of disability, you experience the world differently after that. And that's a big reason why I'm such an advocate for disability rights today, because I go through the world and I look at it as George might, and I try to experience it as George might, being conscious of the difficulties every day that someone might deal with, but as we've noted, can overcome and can live a wonderful, full, healthy, productive, and great life contributing back to society. So that's just my way of saying I think we all have a personal connection in one way or another, and I remind people to, as was noted today, that disability is an if, not an if, but a when in your life. And that means that we need to be building our society and our community to serve every single person out there. So again, thank you, Alderwoman Velazquez, for bringing this forward.
Alderman from the 14th. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Alderwoman, I want to echo, literally, I'm gonna keep this short, echo everything that the Alderman from the 9th said. One, thank you for bringing this forward and giving this board an opportunity to recognize something that's extremely important. You know, I would say for a lot of people that are able-bodied, I also struggle myself having a prosthetic, you know, that are able-bodied, they don't think of the struggles that people go through. A lot of people have disabilities that are seen and unseen, and I think this is just, again, I want to, everything the Alderman from the 9th said, I won't go into a deep discussion on it, but just thank you for being able to allow the board to recognize an important issue, and I would also ask, Madam President, that we make Resolution 40 in bank.
We already made that motion.
Well, I would just love to double-make the motion if we didn't do it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, just want to congratulate you and thank you for your big heart and your service. And anytime you want to come back to the Board of Aldermen, you're welcome, and we are all looking forward to seeing you don that white coat when you become a doctor.
doctor. So congratulations. And at this time, I'll ask everybody to join us for a picture on the steps. Do you want Jaren? Do you want Michelle? If Alderwoman from the 1st would like to approach the dais, if Ryan would like to join us up here as well.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. If Madam Clerk could please read the resolution.
Resolution 39 honoring Ryan Coleman. Whereas Ryan Coleman began his career in public service in May 2005 as an intern for the President of the Board, Jim Shrewsbury. Colleagues from that time recall Ryan was eager to learn and willingness to take on tasks others deemed dull as dirt. He quickly earned his trust, their trust, and became a valuable member of the team. Whereas Ryan went on to serve in key roles with the Assessors' Office, the Budget Division, and the Office of the Comptroller, taking on significant responsibilities, including auditing corporate personal property tax filings, conducting fiscal and operational analyses related to pension liabilities, revenue forecasting, and staffing levels, and managing over $1 billion in equipment leased and bond transactions for city entities. Whereas Mr. Coleman brought his passionate advocacy and nearly two decades of experience in public finance to the city's legislative body in April of 2023, when he became the financial analyst to the St. Louis Board of Aldermen. In this role, he provided trust financial guidance to elected officials and staff, helping colleagues at all levels of experience, understanding complex budgetary and fiscal concepts with clarity and patience. Whereas beyond his technical expertise, Ryan has always shown up for his colleagues in personal and meaningful ways, bringing delicious homemade dishes to office gatherings and celebrating milestones, all with his wonderful sense of humor and good spirit. He is known for his consistent positive attitude, sharp mind, and willingness to follow complex issues wherever they may lead. Whereas Ryan will continue his service to the city of St. Louis in his new capacities as Deputy Comptroller for Finance and Development, beginning June 16th, 2025. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and commend Ryan Coleman for his outstanding service as financial analyst. We extend our heartfelt thanks for his many contributions to the Board and wish him continued success in his new role. We also encourage him to remain connected with the Board. He will always be a valuable part of the city community. We further direct the Clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor, introduced this 13th day of June 2025 by the Honorable Ann Schweitzer, Alderwoman of the 4th, well, I'm sorry, 1st Ward, and the following co-sponsors: the Honorable Megan Green, President of the Board, the Honorable Daniela Velazquez, Alderwoman of the 6th Ward, the Honorable Michael Browning, Alderman of the 9th Ward, the Honorable Laura Keys, Alderwoman of the 11th Ward, the Honorable Matt Devote, Alderman of the 5th Ward, the Honorable Rashine Aldridge, Alderman of the 14th Ward, the Honorable Brett Norrion, Alderman of the 4th Ward, the Honorable Shamim Clark-Hubbard, Alderwoman of the 10th Ward, the Honorable Alicia San Gay, Alderwoman of the 7th Ward.
I think the summary of it all can be said very succinctly. We will miss you so much. You have brought so much to this Board, both in moments of need for when we don't understand something or when we need to understand it better, get the financial support of it, to just being there for each of us as a friend and listening to us talk about all the different issues in our ward and the city. You always brought such wonderful perspective, and every time I came to you with a question, you always took it seriously and were so helpful, no matter what the question was or no matter what I needed to know. And I'm sure that every single member of the Board and every single member of the staff has had that exact same experience with you. I will miss your food so much, so hope you invite all of us to all the parties in the Comptroller's Office. We'll be there. You'll always be invited to everything over here. You have just been such a wonderful colleague. I know we want to hear from you. I'm sure my other colleagues here at the Board have a lot to say as well. And I just want to say thank you, Ryan, from all of us. We'll really miss you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Schweitzer, for introducing this resolution and the really kind words. I got all this down so I could get through it quick. So I'm not going far. And with this new challenge ahead of me, I feel like I'm closer to the beginning of my career than the end. And because there's going to be lots more to talk about down the line, and to be honest, I don't think I could get through everything I want to say to all of you right now without blubbering through my emotions. This is, I'm going to keep this brief. But I've said several times over the last couple of weeks that working for this Board of Aldermen has been the greatest honor in my professional career, and it's true. I've never felt more supported, welcomed, and valued for my contributions than I have in my time here. I've worked for the city for nearly 20 years, so it's saying a lot, over a number of departments. I've had the benefit of working with passionate elected officials, engaging, helpful, and loving staff, while reporting day to day to the statesman of the Board of Aldermen over the last 35 years, Clerk Terry Kennedy, who can't be here today. To Terry, to Clerk Kennedy, thank you for sharing your wisdom with me when I was smart enough to ask for it and patient with me when I wasn't. Please let my successor know I'm happy to discuss my experiences here and hopefully I can help them from taking some of the early missteps that I did. Thank you all so much for this honor. I'm going to try to soak it up for just a little bit before joining my colleagues one more day to go share some tornado relief from collections that were gathered here at the Board, and I'm looking forward to doing that. And then it's back to work on Monday for the Comptroller's Office. So all for City, St. Louis over everybody. Thank you.
I'll start with Alderman from the 9th and work my way across.
Ryan, I think we've all said we're going to miss you a lot around here. It's really something to read this, because you said you just felt like your career was just beginning, and yeah, it's very clear that you've had a long career of public service already. And when I think of you, I think of someone who exemplifies what public service means. I think of somebody who goes above and beyond, who brings an energy and enthusiasm and optimism to the job every day, and such so that like the energy you bring, I'm a little surprised to see that you've been here since 2005, that you came to the Board under Jim Shrewsbury, because it suggests that, you know, you're older than you seem to me. You really do bring just a smile every day and an energy for the job that I think is contagious. It makes our office so much better, and you bring such quality work that I'm not surprised that Comptroller's Office took you away from us, because everyone is going to want to work with you at some point, and they'll be lucky to do so. So we're going to miss you around here, but we know you're not going to be far, and don't be a stranger.
Alderwoman from the 11th?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. So Ryan, I'm so happy to have shared a wall with you between our offices. And, you know, from time to time, I'd say something like the other day, I said, "Ooh, sah." And you heard me and gave a remark, and I appreciate those moments. So I'm wishing you always the very best, best wishes, and keep bringing your best dishes to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Ryan, I just want to say it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. You have a rare quality that even on projects that we disagreed on, it was still fun working with you on them. And that's something that says a lot about the character of an individual, and it was an honor working with you. And I think that I may bring a board bill that says that you still have to bring pulled pork from time to time. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. I also want to echo everything that my colleague said, Ryan. It's just, it's been great to have you around. You've been nothing but positive energy, fun laughs, and also a wealth of knowledge. So for the last three years, I've been able to work with you on the Budget Committee. And in those first two years, I didn't know a lot of how the city budget works, and you was always helpful. And this last year of being Budget Chair, between you and Matt and Caitlin, you all were like my right-hand man and one man, and just was extremely, I mean, you know what those numbers are and was helpful during the process. I'm not going to wait till we bring a board bill, you know? I'm ready to bring a friendly amendment to this resolution and say, whereas Ryan Coleman must continue to bring the pulled pork, and I'm going to let a little secret out the bag, I also appreciate getting that personal bowl of pulled pork that you had made me one time. So all the haters and colleagues out there, but thank you. You would truly be missed. We know where to find you, and Godspeed and whatever we could do to help you. You know you have not just colleagues in Room 230, but you also have true friends that are here to support you in any way. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Ryan, you, I don't have favorites here, but you have been one of my favorite people, particularly my first year as a brand-new alder and jumping right into the Budget Committee was quite a whole lot. And I appreciate all the times that we sat in your office and you listened to all my questions, explained the same thing over and over again with all of the patience so that I could get it and understand it. Any fiscal notes for legislation? You know, I think you are incredibly talented, which is why my first, you know, after we came back after campaign season, I was like, I don't want you to come here, because I had a feeling that people would be fishing for you, and I want you to elevate, because you're talented. I think a complete gem and gift to our city, very smart, very innovative, such great follow-through, very responsive, seriously, like extremely smart. I can't stress that enough. So I'm glad that our city still has you. I think we maybe need to start putting clauses, Madam President, with our employees of how long they need to be here so that they can't be swiped so soon. But it's been such a pleasure to work with you, and I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'm sure a lot of us do feel the same, that, you know, I'm still going to be contacting you with questions, so just because you're going to the Comptroller, I do know exactly where that office is. I think I even saw where your office would be. I will be there. I will still have my questions. I'm just glad that the city is keeping you, and I'm happy to see you grow and be appreciated and valued as a gift that you are.
Alderwoman from the 10th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I just want to echo all the gratitude for you, Ryan, for the work, for the work ethic that you always displayed, the commitment and your passion for something that many might not ever understand, but you make them understand and then make it better. And I also want to say that anything I can ever do to support you along the way, please don't hesitate to call. We know from that family that you made, that Ivy is smiling down, and you are going to continue to make her proud. So Godspeed. Just know, anything that you need from me, I will come running.
Alderwoman from the 6th?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sure I'm going to echo what lots of people have said before, but thank you for your dedication and your hard work, and I have so enjoyed working with you. You've made numbers fun, which is something I've really avoided a chunk of my career that was a joke, everybody. Budget, I realize that. But no, just thank you for your enthusiasm about making everything you do better, making government better. Sometimes when we're in the slog of things, it can be hard to see the big goal what we're working toward, and there have been many times where I've stopped you on your way to your next destination at my office, and your just enthusiasm and love and care for what you do have buoyed my spirit. So thank you, and I'm sure that will not stop. So I'll still be emailing you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, I would like to say, Ryan, that, so growing up, my mom always kind of had a saying for me, would be, "When you see a need, fill it." And it was her way of telling me that, you know, don't wait for somebody to ask you for help. If you see that there's a gap that needs to be filled, if you see there's a need, step in and do it. And I can't think of somebody that exemplifies that more than you. The number of times that, before we even ask you to look into something, you have a 10-paragraph email sent to me about the topic and all the ins and outs and things to consider, and just like your proactive nature, it has been so welcomed and such a huge breath of fresh air down at the Board of Aldermen. I mean, always asking for additional work or things to look into, and sometimes, you know, I worried about whether you slept or not, because I would send you emails at, you know, 12 o'clock at night, and you would respond at like 12:05. Like, you don't need to do that. So remember that in your next job, even though some of us are night owls and send emails in the middle of the night, that mean you have to respond to them then. But we wish you all the best in your next endeavor. I know that I will still be working with you quite frequently as we move a number of things forward in the city, and I can't be more excited for this next step for you. And I think it, you know, it speaks highly for the Board of Aldermen that our staff keeps getting picked off to go to other departments. So we're sad to lose you, but we're very excited to see you in this next role, and thank you so much for all of your service here. And with that, if we want to get on the steps here to have a picture with Ryan.
That was me there.
So noted.
So with that, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Any discussion?
Alderman from the 9th.
Hello. Could I also be added as a cosponsor of 38, Resolution 38?
So noted.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, I wasn't sure.
May I please be added as a cosponsor to 38, 41, and 42?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Does somebody want to make them in bank?
Three. Madam President.
We did, so let me see. 40 was in bank, 39 was not in bank, so if you want to do 38, 39, 41, all need to in bank.
Okay. I make a motion that we pass Resolution 38, 39, and 41 in bank.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we make Resolutions 38, 39, and 41 in bank. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th.
You did not introduce Resolution 42, Madam President.
Correct.
You went to 1.
That's on first reading of resolutions. And we're on the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. So we'll introduce that.
So we had to introduce that to suspend the rules to introduce, because it was late coming in, I thought.
Correct. And so when we get to first reading of resolutions on the, on our agenda, then we will suspend the rules, and I'll recognize you to introduce that resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we make Resolutions 38, 39, and 41 in bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Honored guest this morning. So in our gallery, I want to introduce you to Dylan Welch. Dylan Welch is from Minnesota. He has come here and has become a new friend of the City of St. Louis, and he'll be doing some work here as a bricklayer, because we definitely need that kind of work to be done to help us to recover from all of the tornado damage. So thank you so much for being here. Additionally, I saw Sean Hadley, who is with the Streets Department, and he is such a welcome and amusing personality, and I'm so happy to be working with him in the Streets Department. He is an excellent replace for Larry Tyler, who retired, and I thank Larry Tyler for all of his great service. I enjoyed working with him as well. Mr. Nun from FEMA, I'd like to have him as my honored guest, as well as Cynthia Cowell, who is with SBA. All of the volunteers who across our city and wherever they came from, we are just immensely grateful for all of the volunteers who have come here to the city to assist us. Additionally, all of the people who have been at Shafits, I always want to call it Shavits, but Shafits Center Monday through Thursday, they are not open today, so you can go to Shafits on Monday. But all of the different agencies that are represented there at Shafits to try to help us manage and work through the needs of the people, I am eternally grateful. Thank you. Those are my honored guests.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 6th.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the honored guests from the special of the day, the Ferguson, Ferguson family, for joining us, as well as members from Missouri School for the Blind. I also want to take this moment to wish my, although she's not here in the gallery or in the state, to wish my Aunt Gloria, also known as my Tia Beba, a happy 90th birthday. So thank you.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
So thank you, Madam Chair. So Dylan just sent me a note. He is a St. Louis native, so that's good to know. So you're just coming home. Awesome, awesome. Additionally, I was about to get in trouble. My husband's birthday was on June 10th, so I'd like to wish my husband, soon to be in August, will be 39 years. We got married on our lunch hour and went back to work because we wanted to buy a house a year later, and so I wish my husband a very, very happy birthday once again. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the minutes from Friday, June 6, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, June 6, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, June 6, 2025. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 38 for first reading.
Thank you. I move that we suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill Number 38 for first reading.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 38. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 9th, if you place Board Bill 38 at the end of the first reading of board bills.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 32, sponsored by Alderman Devote, pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the various blocks in the 5th Ward. Board Bill 33, sponsored by Alderman Devote, an ordinance requested by the Sheriff of the City of St. Louis, identifying the powers delegated by the sheriff while prescribing from the office those activities not specifically provided to the sheriff by the Missouri Constitution, by Missouri statute, and by the City of St. Louis ordinance or as specifically authorized by the Board of Aldermen. Board Bill 34, sponsored by Alderman Keys, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, to calm the floor traffic on the 36, 37, 38, 39, 4,04100, 4,200, 4,300, 4,400, 4,500, 4,600, 4,700, and the 4,800 blocks of Lee. Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $26,308,000 as prescribed, I'm sorry, as described in Section 9, 4.600 through 9, 4.655, revised statutes of Missouri 2000, as amended for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, which sum is hereby appropriated as a transportation and trust fund to the by-state development agency for transportation purposes containing severability and an emergency Board Bill 36, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 9, 4.660, revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the City of St. Louis on August 2nd, 1994, pursuant to Ordinance Number 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1, appropriating $13,656,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, to the by-state development agency for certain purposes containing a severability clause. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 9, 4.660, revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the City of St. Louis on November 4th, 1997, pursuant to Ordinance Number 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Fund, directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1, appropriating $13,656,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, to the by-state development agency for certain purposes containing a severability clause. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 9, 4.660, revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the City of St. Louis on November 4th, 1997, pursuant to Ordinance Number 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Fund, directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2, appropriating $13,657,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, to the by-state development agency for certain purposes containing a severability clause. Board Bill 38, sponsored by Alderman Browning, a cosponsor is Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2025 St. Louis Works and a 50/50 Sidewalk Program citywide, providing for the construction and reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sideways, alleys, traffic control, beautification, plant tree planting, resurfacing, and related engineering adjustment listed herein, appropriating $5.6 million from the Street Improvement Fund containing sections for the description of the work, approval of plan, specification, work and material guarantees, estimated costs from city funds and supplemental agreements, and reversion authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirement, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work, and a public work emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Please assign Board Bill 38 to the Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee.
So noted.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To Public Infrastructure, Board Bill 32, 34, and 38. To Public Safety, Board Bill 33. To Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill 35, 36, and 37. That is the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of Public Safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 16, sponsored by Alderman Devote, pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various blocks in the 5th Ward. Board Bill 22, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreement and debt service expenses of the parking division of the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, in the sum of $20,674,900, including $1,984,422 for capital improvements containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 26, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the LaSalle Street from Dillon Drive to Angle Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 1.4 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 27, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in an irregular strip of Dillon Drive, being the easternmost 10 feet beginning at south right of way of the Choto Avenue, continuing southwardly to the south right of way line of LaSalle Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 1.4 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 30, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various locations within the 1st Ward and Crandale Park. The following board bill was reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 31, as amended in committee, sponsored by President Green, and the following cosponsors: Mayor Spencer, Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Orion, Alderman Devote, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 14th. Madam Clerk, if you could please place Board Bill 31 as amended in committee at the end of the regular perfection calendar. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Cohen.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote.
Alderman.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 14th. Madam Clerk, if you could please place Board Bill 31 as amended in committee at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 2, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on March 12th, 2025, to change, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from F Neighborhood Commercial District to A Single Family Dwelling District in City Block 2731, so as to include the described parcel land in City Block 2731, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderman Cohen, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on March 12th, 2025, to change, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from F Neighborhood Commercial District to A Single Family Dwelling District in City Block 2731, so as to include the described parcel land in City Block 2731, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in an irregular strip of Dillon Drive, being the easternmost 10 feet beginning at south right of way of the Choto Avenue, continuing southwardly to the south right of way line of LaSalle Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 1.4 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 30, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to Ordinance Number 70333, as amended by Ordinance Number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various locations within the 1st Ward and Crandale Park. The following board bill was reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 31, as amended in committee, sponsored by President Green, and the following cosponsors: Mayor Spencer, Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Orion, Alderman Devote, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement authorizing and directing an appropriation out of $30 million of the RAM settlement funds for depositing the tornado Keys, Alderman Aldrich, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Aportement appropriating $4,999,526 in community development block grant funds to the Community Development Administration authorizing and directing the director of the Community Development Administration to execute contracts as may be necessary to expand funds, authorizing, and directing the comptroller to issue warrants their own upon the city treasury containing an emergency and a severability clause. Board Bill 29 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Mayor Spencer, President Green, Alderman Aldrich, Alderwoman Valesquez, Alderwoman Keys, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Switzer, and Alderwoman Sanier. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Aportement authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of pathways to removing obstacles to housing funding appropriating the sum of $6,999,198 in pro-housing funds to the Community Development Administration authorizing and directing the director of the Community Development Administration to execute contracts as may be necessary to expand funds, authorizing, and directing the comptroller to issue warrants their own upon city treasury and containing a severability and an emergency clause. That is the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th that we adopt the board, the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 31 as amended in committee sponsored by President Green, Mayor Spencer, Alderman Aldrich, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Cone, Alderman Orion, Alderman Devote, Alderwoman Valesquez, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Aportement authorizing and directing an appropriation in the amount of $30 million of the RAM settlement funds for deposit into the Tornado Relief and Recovery Fund which amounts as described herein containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 31 as amended in committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 31 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th that we perfect Board Bill 31 as amended in committee. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Board Bill 31 is another tornado relief package bill that we are working on and try to get relief out to people that have been impacted by other tornado area. Board Bill 31 ultimately sets up a tornado and recovery fund that would be funds that come from the RAMS money and it would be the 30 million in interest. And the purpose of this fund is, is again, to make sure that we help individuals that have been impacted by this storm. I want to first start off and say 30 million is not enough. And I remember when we was here last go around talking about the RAMS bill, I was fighting for more money for North St. Louis. But understanding that as we was waiting on the state, waiting on the federal government, that we needed to do something. And I appreciate your leadership, Madam President. You know, after the first week, everyone was out triaging and, you know, supporting Action St. Louis or Urban League or for the bill. And then I gave you a call and was like, hey, we need to lease Tesho's interest dollars. And you said yes. That I remember calling Casey and was like, hey, Casey, we got to do something. And she was like, give us some time, but we, we kept at it and we kept at it together. And eventually understand that the mayor had a lot of things that was going on and just a lot of balls that she was juggling that she never was against it, but she just needed to kind of assess the, the landscape. And then we got to a place where it was a green light. So here we are now. So Board Bill 31, again, established a tornado relief fund. And in this fund, the purpose of the tornado relief, it is to include stabilizing housing. And before I continue, also want to thank several alder individuals that have been impacted by the tornado that also made sure that language was included in this legislation. If it was Alderwoman from the 11th, or the Alderman from the 9th, or the 10th that responded back and made sure that there were certain eligible uses in the legislation so that as alders that are most impacted by this tornado knew exactly what they needed to make sure that was in this legislation. So I'm just going to do a kind of a walkthrough and then have several amendments. So on page three, on page three, we talk about establishing the tornado relief. Again, that's $30 million from the RAMS interest. And the purpose of this tornado relief fund is includes stabilizing housing. We want to make sure that we prevent homelessness and displacement and to give priorities to uninsured and underinsured households. Also, what this fund can be helpful for is repairing public infrastructure, knowing that there's been a lot of damage to our infrastructure during this tornadoes. If it's been sidewalks completely ripped up or trees that have been pulled from just the ground because a tornado came through. It also provides capital to nonprofits that has honestly been filling in the gap during this time. And I want to thank so many nonprofits from the Urban League to For the Veil, to Invest STL, to Action for the Culture, Action St. Louis for the Culture. But just on day one, organizations stepped up and said, let's help the people. And the reality was government was not set up to know how to react to a tornado that we didn't know it was going to happen. But organizations just stepped up and made it happen. So I want to thank each nonprofit and organization that has been out there on day one and continuing to do the work. This fund is also to help support the relocation and secure storage spaces for personal property, address the needs of seniors and including meals and assistance, and support of in-home, in-home support services. Again, a lot of the, the purposes for this fund is really to help our, our most vulnerable if it's home, if it's home repair, if it's temporary housing. I think one of the great ideas that Alderwoman from the 12th brought up was assisting in making sure that there is deductible aids for rebuilding, making sure that there is storage space for people, and really focusing in and prioritizing that people that are impacted will be the first priority for these different eligible uses. Last night, we heard several, last night at our community town hall, that was a very great turnout. And I want to thank each community member. I think we was there for about three to four hours, gave a lot of really good input. And one of the things that kept coming up on page five was administrative 5% cost. And I want to clarify that 5% administrative cost is only for city staff. So we understand that nonprofits that are doing the work, they, they need to pay their staff. And a lot of those nonprofits have, you know, tapped into their reserves. So that 5% would not impact those nonprofits. These are also matching funds for state and federal grunt use so that we can have matching funds that will come from the state and the federal government. When it comes to accountability, I think that is extremely important that we know as these funds are being dispersed and as these, as the tornado relief and recovery fund is being set up, what is going to be the accountability measure. So one of the actually great ideas that the Alderman from the 9th brought up on page six is that the mayor's office is committed to doing report, monthly reports that will go to the Budget and Public Employees Committee that will detail expenditures and any data and numbers of individuals that have been served by the outcome of this fund. And then they will also provide an annual report to the Budget and Public Employees Committee upon passing of this bill. So I also have some amendments that I would like to bring forward. And I would like to move to adopt amendment number one to Board Bill 31 as amended in committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st that we adopt amendment number one to Board Bill 31 as amended in committee. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So Board Bill, I mean amendment number one is Exhibit A that is in our original bill. And what we're doing is, one, we left off, one of the input that we heard from the community, we left off the Baid neighborhood that was not intentional as we looked at the path of the tornado that was one that left off. So we wanted to include that and end up just putting the neighborhoods in alphabetical order. One of the things that I think people were saying last night over and over, they thought the way that it was listed, that that was going to be priority. And some of the most impacted hit areas was not at the top. So even though this exhibit is just an exhibit that talks about where these funds will help, we still want to make sure that we're being intentional and that we're listening to the community. So we made sure that we put all the neighborhoods in alphabetical order as well as adding Baid into the impacted area that can be eligible for the use of this fund. And with that, Madam President, I would open up for any questions.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Hello. Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very happy to see that this is now an alphabetical list. When I got in last night, even though I made it to my house by 10 o'clock, I wasn't able to go to bed till after midnight. And my phone was ringing at 7:00 a.m. about this once again. And so this has really been, I mean, just a hot button thing. So alphabetical order in the future, please, please, please. I'm bigging like James Brown that, because I'm telling you, this has been something else to deal with. Additionally, I had people who said that they were concerned that there were wards that initially supposedly were not affected by the ward that are on, that, that is on this list. And so there's some concern that while these are for north side wards, but all north side wards were not affected. And so I'm going to ask, based on what my constituents have said to me, that we look at this list very carefully and the path of the storm to make sure that these are areas that are directly affected by the storm. Thank you.
No, just standing. Alderman from the 14th, or sorry, Alderwoman from the 12th has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I'm lowering my hands because I have a question for the next, if he has the next amendment. And I can't find the amendments in the drive. Where are they? Because I looked in the original second reading, did they put them in the perfection?
I think they're in perfection.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. To the Alderwoman from the 11th, I, I hear you. So elevate it. Let me put some respect on the elevation, liberation of the 11th Ward. So this map that we actually use, if I'm not mistaken, came from mapping and zoning where they did a detailed, very detailed map of where the tornado from where it started and touched down and went through North St. Louis. So we tracked literally with the neighborhoods that are included, were all from what our city, and then national centers had tracked of where that tornado went through. But I do appreciate your comments and also agree this was a, a hot topic last night. And I think there was just confusion from residents that they, the way they seen the list, that they thought it was going to be in priority. And I want to let everybody know, those at that meeting that now can probably hear us because we didn't have sound and S E L TV is working hard and they'll have that up by Monday that this is not based on where they are, if you're number one, or seven, or eight, a rank system. But we wanted to make sure that we hear them when we put in alphabetical order. And with that, Madam President, I would close on amendment one to Board Bill 31 as amended in committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the, was it Alderwoman from the 1st, that we adopt amendment number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to adopt amendment number two, Board Bill 31 amended on the floor.
Is there a second?
Hang on.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th that we adopt amendment number two. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Amendment number two, it starts, just in case, I'll, I'll read the page number. Maybe it's Alderwoman from the 12th is pulling it up. It starts on page seven, line seven through 12 at number E. And what we're including in, and this is about the nonprofits. So we include, after providing capital for, we include disaster related. And as you continue to go on initiatives led by the nonprofit organization, and we add it with priority considering for funding being provided to nonprofits which both demonstrated and experienced with local tornado disaster relief. So we really want to make sure that the funds are going to nonprofits that have, and not saying that others are not eligible, but priority goes to, and this was one of the things that members last night said. I think from what you will see from most amendments is this is input from last night meeting is they wanted to make sure that the funding go to folks that have been doing the work. So we wanted to include that as well as under that section, there, it talks about how those funds should be used but not limited to. And we added a new line, Section 5, that says case management services related to tornado relief, including but not limited to social services and services supporting tornado disaster relief, impacted youth. That again was something that came up over and over is we need to make sure during this time that we are uplifting our young people and making sure that we are supporting our young people during this process. So with that, Madam President, I would open up for any questions.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam President. May I please inquire of the Alderman of the 14th?
The Alderman from the 14th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 11th.
Elevated 11, yes, I will.
Thank you.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. So another issue that came up is that we know that we have things such as this. We have nonprofits that literally spring up overnight. And so one of the concerns that I heard constituents saying late last night is that these need to be established long prior to the tornado incident, but that verbiage is not here. Is that a friendly amendment that could be added?
Alderwoman, what is your terminology of long-term established?
I would say, you know, they've been in existence, I would say, prior to the, the tornado. Because we know that probably since May 16th, I don't know how many nonprofits have sprung up. And while we do appreciate that assistance and, and their desire to help, we do have to be very careful and intentional about the way every single dime of this money is spent. When we're dealing with agencies that don't necessarily really have a track record to go by, you know, these fly by night, and we do need to be very concerned about that. So I'm just bringing a concern based on the telephone interactions I had last night.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, I think I definitely hear your concern. And without kind of talking with like the mayor's office, who's going to be establishing this fund, I don't want to put something that may hold back. I know there's been, in talking with the mayor's office, they know the ones Diamond Divas, For the Veil, Invest STL, Action St. Louis for the Culture, again, Urban League, the Red Cross. I, I think they know the ones that they know those, but I, I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to adding that, thinking that it will not be something that would hold, hold it back.
All right. Thank you so much.
So are you incorporating a friendly amendment there? Sorry. Who?
I believe the Alderwoman is making a friendly amendment to amendment number two that says that they have to be.
An established nonprofit prior to the tornado of May 16th.
So I think it would be after it says located within the City of St. Louis, I think it would be and established prior. I think it would be and established prior to the May 16th tornado.
Thank you.
I think that's what the Alderwoman is saying, like, that the president and the mayor is fine with it. Just so I stay consistent, because this won't be the only amendment that I vote probably present on, because I, you know, this is the process, how we do it. But just having a little bit of knowledge ahead of time would be helpful. So I know that the mayor and the president's office is fine with it, and I would just, you know, ask for a roll call on it, but those offices are fine. I'm just going to be consistent with this amendment and a future amendment coming down.
Thank you so much.
All right. So with that, is there any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Let me try to get, hold on. Okay. Yes, I don't have a problem with amendment. I want to say that if you read the current amendment as it reads, it just says it gives priority. It doesn't say we can't consider other people, which you might want to consider other people that you don't know exist, that have experience. And you might want to consider people who may not live in the city. I don't want to limit the help that my community will have. In fact, some of my best assistants so far, because I've been in the streets, have been for people who don't live in the city, whose parents might live in the city. I had somebody very famous call me this week. You all know the name, and who wants to assist. So I like the language, and I'm not going to vote against it, but I do just like the language saying giving, where is it, given, okay, I got too many things open, I'm sorry. Here it is, right here. It says, "With priority consideration." That gives some openness to things that are, other things that might be possible. So priority consideration says, "We'll still work with the people that we know, but we're not going to shut the door for the people that we don't know." I think that's a mistake.
Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. And I do, like I say, I will, the body can choose what they want to. I agree with the Alderwoman from the 12th. I think kind of the goal of this legislation is not trying to get too detailed in it where we end up tying our hands, where we can't end up providing services in this nuance of a tornado and a disaster services to organizations or contractors or things like that. So I just want to ditto, I think, what the Alderwoman from the 12th is saying. I don't think it's bad, I just wouldn't want any unattended, I mean, that's legislation, right? Unattended consequences where we end up tying our hands in the process.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I want to do, and I will withdraw the friendly amendment, because I did think of a few agencies that have been doing this work. So I withdraw it, and, you know, it is the responsibility of whoever is administering these funds to screen. And so I'm going to leave that in their wheelhouse to manage. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Amendment 2? Any further discussion? Seeing none, and there had been a request for roll call?
I take my, since we're not doing the friendly amendment, I withdraw my roll call on Amendment Number 2.
Right. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we adopt Amendment 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to adopt Amendment Number 3 to Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we adopt Amendment Number 3 to Board Bill Number 31 as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As we were going through the bill, we also wanted to make sure that these amendments, at least, I would say, the first few of them went through city council's office. And one of them that they found that we wanted to just make sure we was clear on was, and four and five is the same, instead of saying appropriate, because we won't be appropriating funds, they will be dispersed from this, from this tornado relief fund. So everywhere that you see appropriation in the fund, you will, instead of saying appropriate, it will say dispersed. With that, I would close for any questions.
Any further questions? Any questions on Amendment 3? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded, Alderwoman from the 12th. Alderwoman from the 12th.
Okay, so when I'm looking at the amendments, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. When I'm looking at my amendments online, I don't see Amendment Number 3. I see Amendment Number 2, and then I see Amendment, it goes from Number 2, then the next page, it says Amendment Number 6, Amendment Number 7. I don't see 3 and 5, and I'm clicking on everything here. So what does 3 say?
Yes, ma'am. I could read 3 for you. It says, "To amend Board Bill, Board Bill 31, on page 3, line 18, as it follows, shall be appropriated in accordance with its ordinance." Instead of saying appropriated, Alderwoman, we saying dispersed. And that's on page 3, line 18.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Need further discussion? Seeing none?
I have no further questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, from the 10th, that we adopt Amendment Number 3 to Board Bill 31 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to adopt Amendment 4 to Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we adopt Amendment Number 4 to Board Bill 31. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. And I'll, it's, so this amendment is on page 4, line 9, and it's another one of those, instead of saying appropriated, where it says, "Funds deposited and held in the tornado relief and recovery fund may be appropriated." Instead of saying appropriated, we say dispersed. It is similar to the previous amendment, but that amendment that changes appropriated is on page 4, line 9. And I will open up for any discussion.
Any further discussion on Amendment 4? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we adopt Amendment Number 4 to Board Bill 31 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to adopt Amendment Number 5 to Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt Amendment Number 5 to Board Bill 31 as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This on page 5, line 20, so where we talk about A, B, and C, where it says monies, instead of appropriated, we will say dispersed again. And then in 4, instead of saying any appropriation, and I can never get this word right, we'll say specific awards funded hereby appropriated to the tornado disaster relief. We're being clear that the awards that are being funded are going to individuals from the tornado disaster relief, as well as a board of E and A apportionment approves of any contracts and agreements from dispersments to recipients, contractors, and vendors, shall constitute authority for the city signature to make sure that such dispersment was approved by the contract and agreement. And with that, Madam President, I would open up for any discussion.
Any further discussion on Amendment 5? Any further discussion on Amendment 5? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you, Madam President. Would the Alderman from the 14th repeat that last part, please?
The Alderman from the 14th, repeat the amendment that you just talked about.
Yes, ma'am. So again, on page 5, line 20, instead of saying appropriated, we are saying dispersed. And then when we get to...
Yeah, I got that part. It was the next part that you said.
Okay, determinations of the use of the tornado fund. So instead of saying any appropriations from, we say the word that I can never really say, specific awards are funded hereby appropriated to the tornado disaster relief. Again, more cleanup language. We say that a little further down. Certain awards of the amount from the tornado relief and recovery fund of emergency contracts, and this is new language, should, or contracts to specific recipients, contractors, and vendors, and basically saying that the board of estimate and appropriations will approve those contracts and agreements with sending out those funds, ensuring that those signatures make dispute, send those funds out according to the approval of the contract of that agreement.
Could I make a statement in regards to that, please?
Yes, you may continue, Alderwoman.
Okay, all I would ask is, where's the fidelity given with the rental assistance? Because I don't want it where we're saying that we're giving the people the money and then nothing moves forward. And that's what I'm asking. And so we are playing with people's lives, and I don't want people to have hopes and wait on things, and then the dollars don't come through. Am I making sense what I'm saying?
Would you like to inquire of the Alderman from the 14th?
Yes.
Alderman from the 14th, would you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 13th?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
So Alderman from the 14th, I just want to make sure that we are ensuring people are receiving the dollars from these organizations. And I give the example of the prior rental assistance. And so when that money was supposed to be dispersed, and those people were supposed to get those dollars, and a lot of people never got the dollars. And so I just don't want, as the Alderwoman from the 11th was saying, we have to be real careful. I don't want it where we're saying that we'll give, and I'm just going to use this as a scenario, we'll give insurance highest organization the money to disperse these rental assistance, and then people never get the money, and insurance highest still has the money sitting there. So I just want us to be very careful, to make sure we do what we say, and people are going to be taken care of. Because again, it's lives that are being impacted from this.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things, and I totally agree with you, and want to make sure, and hopefully, we can take some lessons learned. I was listening to the State House when they gave the $100,000 to what happened in Joplin, and monies was going out, but they wasn't going to the people. So we wanted to make sure that we bank, or bake in some accountability in this legislation. So that's why we have on page 6, the fund accountability is that the mayor's office will monthly report to the budget and public employees committees on every expenditure, data, number of individuals served, and outcomes, as they be tracking the money that goes out and to what the organizations are doing with it. And that is a way that we will publicly know who's getting the money, so that we can know that, we can hold them accountable also, that these funds are getting out. But I stand with you 110%, that it's going to be critical that, you know, we don't sell hopes and dreams, that we actually give people what they need through these funds. And I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, this is an opportunity, again, of a lifetime, and I just don't want us to mess up.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
And I have, Madam President, members of the board, I have a statement. I have gone along with the amendments that were kind of easy. I need to see Amendment 5. I cannot find it anyplace in the drive. When I open each of the amendments, it says Amendment 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, but there's no 5, and there was a couple of other ones that's not there. And I would like somebody to place that so I can read it. Because, let's see, it says Amendment 2, then it goes to Amendment 6, then it goes to Amendment 7. And I clicked on each one of these, and I'm not able to find Amendment 5.
Alderwoman?
I'd like to read that, because that's a...
So it's in the perfection place, and it's labeled Amendments 2-5. So Amendments 2 through 5 are all in the same document. So scroll down to the bottom of that document, and Amendment 5 should be there.
Okay, let me look at the bottom of the document. Okay. Amendment 4. Okay. Here it is, here. Okay, I was going across, and I wasn't picking 5 for some reason, okay? All right. So it says, "No money may be dispersed." No monies may be dispersed. And if I could inquire, Madam President, if I could inquire from the Alderwoman of the 13th, please?
The Alderwoman from the 13th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I would like you to repeat your concerns you have, and they're right on point about especially the tenant impacted fund or the rent money, because I have a person in my ward who applied for rent assistance, rental assistance program in December of 2024. She just got the money two days ago, from December 2024. As a landlord, if her landlord has not been a good person, she would have been evicted by now, okay? So your concerns that I heard were very valid, and I wanted to hear what you said again about making sure there was some kind of fiduciary responsibility.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that, you and I had the conversation in regards to that, but ironically, I have a tenant that never received the dollars. And so now we're trying to work with them. And I, with people being in these tornadoes and in these situations, Alderwoman, I don't want them going through that stress, because they're already stressing, and then they have to wait on these dollars, and they never receive them. So that's why the question I asked, how are we going to make sure that these organizations, whoever receives these dollars, is going to make sure that they give those to those people?
All right. Valid question. Thank you. And now, if, thank you, if the Alderman from the 14th would yield, Madam President?
Would the Alderman from the 14th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. I'm looking at the Amendment B, let's see, B, it says, "No monies may be," and you changed it from appropriated to dispersed from the tornado relief and recovery fund in excess of two available monies within that fund. What does two available monies within that fund mean?
The two available, my fault. No money shall be appropriated to dispersed from the tornado relief funds exceed of the two available months within the fund, two months when the, I would assume that the fund was created with money within it.
So are we saying that they're in ex, in excess of the two, the two TWO available monies, are there two available monies within that fund? That is a clumsy phrase to me, and I'm trying to understand what it means.
Yeah, so I know the tornado relief and recovery fund is one fund, but we may get money like reimbursed from FEMA and state. So to make sure that we don't trip it up, it is going to go to the recovery fund to account for that money, then back into the tornado relief fund.
So I don't understand why we need the number 2 in there. Wouldn't it be excess of available monies within the fund or funds, as it may be?
I think that is actually just a scribbler's error, Alderwoman, and if you want to take, if you want to make a friendly amendment to...
Right. Yes, that needs to be taken out. It's the available monies within the fund.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with that, and I accept that.
Okay, and then, I had another question here. So number 2 of 4 says, "Recommended to the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, specific awards of funds hereby appropriated," let's see.
Alderwoman from the 12th, could you repeat that? We're trying to find here where you saw that...
Page 5, line 20.
Okay.
B, where it say, "No money may, no money may be dispersed from the tornado relief recovery fund in excess of..."
Okay.
Just take out 2.
Get it out, thank you. Get it now, thank you. Just want to make sure we're updating in real time.
All right. And could you go over number four again, Alderman from the 14th of what? So the mayor has, office shall have general oversight and administer the tornado, no, no, can't talk, administer the tornado relief and recovery fund. Recommend to the Board of Estimate and Apportement, specific awards of funds hereby appropriated to the tornado relief and recovery fund for inclusion in the city's annual operating budget for city departments. Recommend to the Board of E N A, specific awards of amount. So you're going to specific instead of any, why are we going to specific? Can you tell me that?
Yes, ma'am, this was language that was provided by the city council. Trying to just tighten up to say that any, I can never say that word. So specific awards that are appro, yeah, yeah. You said any of those awards that it is key that we are talking about those awards and that those awards will be approved if it's a contract or agreement through E N A. So it still allows the money to flow, but it just wants to, we want to make sure that we had tighter language that say, these are the certain awards that will be approved through E N A or that go into the, from the tornado recovery relief fund to these organizations, to these contractors or to these vendors.
And they have to be specific versus general?
Yes, ma'am, we want to be very clear.
No further questions?
No, yeah, yes, ma'am, you is right.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, trying to lower my hands, okay? No, I'm sorry.
Just checking, all right. Is there any further discussion on...
I was trying to lower, then it goes back up.
It's down now. Think we got it. Any further discussion on Amendment number five? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th. We adopt Amendment number five to Board Bill 31 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Alderwoman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. To help out, I will read Amendment six out loud, the language that's being added. And so essentially this is saying that we will give priority for funds and contracts to be given to businesses located and operated in the city of St. Louis that are tax compliant. And this is mainly around the housing piece of this bill. Again, it doesn't exclude anybody who does not operate or is not located in the city, but it does give priority to those who are. And the amendment does have the support of the mayor's office and the president's.
Any further discussion on Amendment number six? Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, you have to make a motion.
I would move to adopt Amendment six to Board Bill 31 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th. We adopt Amendment number six to Board Bill 31. And it is further discussion, Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I do want to ask for a roll call on this. I think this is kind of similar to, not that it's bad, I think it's similar to what the Alderwoman from the elevated level was trying to do with certain organizations. My fear is, so this even talking with the mayor's office, when it comes to making sure they give contractor to city licensed contractors, that could be something during the RFP process. And I would, I mean, I would not want to put in legislation where even though it's saying it's only priorities to, and I'm trying to make sure I got the right one because I know that there was two priorities to contractors in the city of St. Louis that are licensed and paid, oh, this is the wrong one, hold on. Oh, here go the right one. Where it says priorities for funds, priorities for funds and contracts shall be given to businesses located and operated in the city of St. Louis that are tax compliant. And again, only thing I'm saying, my fear is that I would not want us to be so specific, as I can never say that word, when this is something that can be baked during the RFP process. So would the Alderwoman from the 7th yield for questions?
The Alderwoman from the 7th yield...
Yeah, I gotta quit laughing at me, I can't say the word. I see Alderwoman laugh, I know, I, yeah, I get that. Alderwoman from the 13th laugh at everybody. Jesus. Would the Alderwoman from the 7th yield?
Would the Alderwoman from the 7th yield to questioning from the Alderman?
I specifically yielded.
Thank you for being very specific in your motion. Alderman from the 14th?
I wish I'd be remain to the conversation, I'm just kidding. So Alderwoman, could you just kind of give your thought process about this amendment and why you're trying to prioritize funds and contracts shall be given? So it's almost, I get the prioritize, then it shall be given to businesses located and operated in the city of St. Louis that are tax compliant. Can you talk about like your reasoning behind this?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that question. So I think we all know how I feel about tax compliance. It's the Tax Accountability Development Act. And again, I think these are things that were already, that are very much the intention of the administration who will be implementing it. But last night at our hearing and from other outreach, I think there are folks who are concerned. I think it makes sense to give priority to folks who are in the city, that are based in the city because they pay their taxes in the city, they operate their business in the city, they go through a lot of things to do it. And as you'll know, it's a little bit different from the original one that you saw where it said, you know, it was about the licenses. We decided to pivot away from licenses and instead just say, you know, priority to folks here. And again, this is something that the administration does intend to do. We're just putting, putting it in writing to make sure that it is clear to the public. And also we are, you know, we did have discussion about making sure nobody's excluded. So again, just because you're not based or operating in the city does not mean you are not eligible for any of these contracts. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of work, there's a lot of work for everything. But it means that if you operate your business in the city every single day, you pay the taxes, you're complying with us, we will, you know, you will get priority consideration for those funds or contracts.
With drafting this, have you talked to like any contractors, especially like the black contractors? Have you seen this language that they may feel may put them in a bind at all?
There was actually some black contractors who, reaching, sorry, my mic, who have been reaching out about the process. I know we had a couple of black contractors who were present last night that uplifted it. And they actually, you know, preferred this language, preferred something to let them know that they would get priority and talked about kind of how much more hoops they have to jump through just to stay compliant with the city and to operate in the city. And felt like because they take they step, they should get prioritization.
Okay, so I'm just asking, so before drafting this, have like the Yafids of the world or like the major black contractors seen this language just to, okay?
We've had a conversation with them. And again, the mayor's office who has been having a lot of those conversations with contractors and things, also already had a conversation letting them know that they very much intended to implement it this way.
To implement this language, you saying?
They very much intended to implement it in a way that gave priority to businesses that operate and are located in the city. They've expressed that in all of their conversations.
So it's similar to, so you saying even without this language, the mayor and the office already planned on giving priority to contractors in the city of St. Louis already?
They are very open and we're trying to figure out how to...
Could this also be done during the RFP process?
I mean, I think a lot of things we put in legislation could be done in RFP process. I think it makes me feel better. I think it'll make some folks in the community feel better to see it in the legislation. And honestly, because it's going to be in the RFP process, which the mayor's office has indicated, it's not like it's in contrast to opposition.
So if they are a black contractor right across the city line that has been doing, you know, we got that, that line right there off of like Forty and Clayton that has been doing work in the city of St. Louis for a very long time, they're a black contractor, you saying they wouldn't get priority because they don't, they, they business in the county, but they do work in the city?
Well, they do, if they operate in the city, it does say located, operate in the city. So if they do work in the city and they have a record of doing work in the city, they would meet the point that says located and operated.
And how are you going to, I mean, so this is different from your Todd I bill, which is developers making sure they pay their taxes. I'm assuming that they are compliant, they will go through collector revenue to make sure that they are compliant?
Or tax complacency to collector of revenue. And also again, a lot of them will have to have city business license. And in order to maintain your city business license, you usually do have to be tax compliant regardless. So, you know, it's not anticipated that was something that would be a hiccup.
So they could be, they business could be in the county, but have a, they do work in the city. So they have a city business license. So, but that could be, if I have a business in West County, but I do business in the city as well, have a business license. I'm trying to figure out, are you trying to prioritize people who have a business in the city and do work in the city? Or because you say and operate? So again, they could also be in West County, they can be in Alavet, they could be in Eureka, they could be in Kansas City, have a business license in the city and do work in the city. So basically, everybody that have a active business license and pay their taxes that do work in the city is priority?
No, the folks who do, who are located in the city and operate in the city get priority. If you're in St. Charles and you do work in the city, of course you're eligible, but you would not necessarily be getting priority consideration.
So again, going back to like if you're a black business owner, right, one line over from the county, they operate in the city, they're a minority contractor, been doing work in the city for 20 years, but they not located, so they wouldn't get priority?
Right, but if you're a black business, you do business in the city and you operate in the city, you would get priority. And we do have many of those. And I do think it makes sense for us to prioritize those folks who operate in the city and who are located here.
Thank you, I'll be a present because again, I don't, I don't want to tie our hands where we are putting it in the legislation where literally it can be done during the RFP process. We're talking to the mayor's office as this was happening like 14 minutes before this meeting, not being able to vet it or not being able to call black contractors and see if they was okay with it. We're talking with them, knowing that they okay with the language, but they also said, we're literally going to be doing this in the RFP. Again, it goes back to like the Alderwoman from the 11th Ward, where we're not getting so generic and so detailed that we still have flexibility to ensure that we do not tie our hands on certain contractors in the city that want to do work, but, and maybe have a great, a great track record of doing work in the city, but that they don't get priority. I get where you're trying to come from, but just me personally, I'd be a present. And I'm done with my line of questioning, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd? She can't hear you. Alderwoman Boyd?
Thank, no, I heard you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Would the Alderwoman from 7th yield to question?
Yes.
Alderwoman, I was, the question I have is said to...
Oh, sorry, Alderwoman.
In your, can you hear me?
Yes, I, give me a moment. Alderman from the 7th, will you yield the questions to the Alderwoman from the 13th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
She said yes, I heard it.
I'm, so you're directing it to me and I direct it to Alderwoman.
And so in your, in your bill, in your amendment, you were talking about preventing homelessness. And so it was about temporary housing. I get, yeah, temporary housing, I'm trying to read it. And so it said, insurance assistance, priority relief for uninsured. And so when you say temporary, so that's, I'm kind of nervous about that. So when you say temporary, is it a certain amount of time that they'll be placed somewhere in a temporary housing? Is it a month, is it two weeks or?
Alderwoman, that part, portion of the bill is already, was already in, what you're reading was already in the legislation, I'm not adding that to the legislation. So it might be better for the person who is representing Megan Green to respond to that question for the bill. I think they are leaving temporary housing very vague and open on purpose from our conversations. One, because they can't duplicate the work that FEMA is doing. And then two, because it could, it could take a number of forms of what temporary housing looks like, whether somebody wants to be relocated or might like temporary housing on their property. But my amendment is actually not about that. My amendment is the part that just says prioritization for funds and contracts shall be given to businesses located and operated in the city of St. Louis that are tax compliant. The previous language before that was already in the bill.
Okay, I'm, I'm just nervous about the housing piece. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on Amendment number six? Alderwoman from the 12th?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. If the Alderwoman from the 7th would yield?
The Alderwoman from the 7th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. And can you tell me what tax compliance means to you?
You know, I think according to how it works in the city, it would be the same process that they have to maintain tax complacency for like the city licenses process. So they would be current on their, you know, on their taxes essentially.
So they have to be current on all their taxes? They couldn't be in a payment plan or anything else? They just have to be current?
I mean, a lot of that is going to refer, you know, be on operation and on implementation. So I don't want to speak too much for the mayor's office, but from my understanding, they do view tax compliance as a part of you're in route, you're making your payments to be caught up or you are currently current. But that is not specified so that it is left up to the administration and the collector of revenue to make out, you know, what that might, what those specific details might look like with each situation.
And that's in it, that, what you just said is the problem with that legislation. When you say it's going to be, have to be determined, when you write legislation, it should specify what that means. If you're going to put a criteria, then that criteria should be spelled out exactly what that means. I, I don't agree with the amendment itself and I'm going to be a no. I have probably been in housing much longer than you've been alive. We started doing housing in 1979 and we've won awards. And I've been working with black contractors all of that time. In fact, before Yafid Elamin was probably, was a little baby, my husband worked for Mocan. And I've known Eddie Hassan, who is her father for a long time, and a lot of other black contractors. And not just black contractors, Hispanic contractors I have working for me, white contractors, but particularly that bad word of women and minorities, sometimes it's hard to get contractors. And so I'm agreeing with the Alderman from the 14th when he says, he's going to vote present. I'm going to vote no, because we do not want to close the doors of inclusion on anybody and especially women, Hispanics, Asians, African Americans and other people who might live in Wellston or Normandy or whatever, but has a business license and is an MBE or whatever. So we want those kind of things, those people to be working in my community. And especially since my community is one of the hardest hit, I'm going to tell you really, I'm really opposed to it. And kind of sad that you all brought this to be something because we want our community put back fast and in a hurry and we want qualified people. And I don't want to be limiting or saying, well, we'll get to you, but first let's get to all these people that, a few people that may be in the city. And I'm sure that the contractors who lived in the city, they do like an amendment like this because that gives them right up to the front. But that doesn't make them the best person to boot to the job and it also limits people. So I am opposed to this. I have never heard any of the black contractors who I talked to in the 30 and 40 years that I've dealt with this, say, yeah, we like this kind of amendment. In fact, we've gotten phone calls and that would be the clerk that used to be the 18th Ward Alderman and myself, over the years, many phone calls against this kind of things that people felt like that they were shutting, shutting the doors for women and other minorities. Okay, so for me, I can't support this. I'm, I'm opposed to this and I think you need to go back to the table on this one.
Any further discussion on Amendment six? Any further discussion? Then Alderwoman from the 7th, you're recognized to close on Amendment six.
Thank you, I just wanted to get some clarification that tax compliance is actually a comptroller document that is already in the process. So that's how they'll be doing tax compliance. It's already baked in, it's something that folks do. So there's a form that you get that is a part of the comptroller's function. And that would be how it is defined here. Again, the purpose of this amendment is to give city businesses and give them first, give them priority. Again, we're not excluding anybody, we're not leaving anybody out. But I do believe that if you operate your business in the city, you pay your taxes in the city, you do your work in the city, then you should be able to get priority to these funds. And it is great that it's not leaving out, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to have to be done and rebuilt in the city. So I don't think we should cut anybody out, but I do think there are certain groups that we should prioritize for funding.
Alderwoman from the 10th?
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Would the Alderwoman from the seventh yield to question?
Alderwoman from the seventh yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 10th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I, I truly believe that I understand the sentiment and the spirit of this amendment, but I also think, especially for the public that's watching, the verbiage, the more that we look into it, does not speak to what you really want and what we would really want, I'm gonna tell you why. Um, because of the things, even the conversation that many of us have had going back and forth here about this, the things that we have talked about, the people we have referenced, none of the language, this right here does not speak to that, right? And so I think this conversation about it being in the implementation, which is not our role here today, and the responsibility in holding people accountable, which is our role today and tomorrow, whenever this goes into fruition, is important. But when you just read the verbiage of it, which you did, I think that there may unfortunately, and even from some people that have reached out to me during a conversation, be some unintended consequences in this for the very people since that you're trying to look out for. I get it, we all get it down here. But when you just have the verbiage that you have in this amendment, there will, I'm afraid, be some unintended consequences for some of our contractors that have been absolutely doing the work, absolutely. And they know that any of us that would be at the table would fight for them. But we wanna make sure we fight for them the right way, because this one right here, if there's one thing, it might exclude them. Um, so, I'm not asking, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm not asking you to withdraw or anything like that. I just wanna get up and publicly speak because of, I wanna tell you that I understand, again, what you're trying to do, but just being around, listening, and looking back into some of the conversations that we've had, and also understanding, because even the person that's listening is listening to what we're saying and not understanding that that's not really what's even in the amendment. So if we wanna do that kinda work, I think that work will come with the mayor's office, with the implementation of this fund, however we wanna look at it that way. And I think that we will absolutely be in standing and in rightful positions to fight for, um, fight to make sure that it's equitable in the way that they disperse it.
Alderwoman from the 12th?
Um, I'm, thank you, Madam President, but I think Alderwoman from the 13th had her hand up first.
Apologies, Alderwoman from the 13th.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'm kinda piggybacking on what they're referring to in regards to, uh, the contractors and how we will be addressing and get those people to step up. So, uh, could the Alderwoman from the seven answer a question, please?
The Alderwoman from the seventh yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 13th?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the 13th, you may proceed.
So Alderwoman, uh, with your one, say priority, priority for funds and contracts shall be given to business located and operating in the city. So are you looking to change that so they won't? It, it's that, it's just not specifying people in the city?
Um.
Because I keep hearing people ask that question.
Yeah, I, I was looking originally to say priority to folks who are located in, you know, to locate and operate in the city, to give, to give folks who operate and are located in our city priority.
Okay, and so I guess that's gonna exclude a lot of people that might, uh, be able to qualify that, or minority contractors, even though they're like, uh, previous Alderpeople stated, they're in the county, but they're working in the city. And so they could be minority and/or women, so that's why I was asking the question. Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th?
Thank you, um, if the Alderwoman from the seventh would yield?
The Alderwoman from the seventh yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Um, first of all, Alderwoman, I wanna say, um, I do appreciate you wanting to look out for the people in the city. I have always been opposed to city residents who work for the city living out in the county. Um, a previous Alderwoman that was senior when I got there by the name of Joanne Wayne, used to have a saying that you need to lay where you get paid, or it was something like that. And I always agreed with her. So I understand what you might be trying to do, but sometimes you have limited amount of people that you can include in, in the process, and you don't wanna, uh, leave them out, okay? And this is one of those occasions. If we had built up fully minority, women, I know all those things that the person up in, uh, the president's office says is so bad, it is not. Um, I, I have contractors that work for me all the time, and I have a diverse, um, group of contractors that work for me, and they are Hispanic, they are black, they are women, they are white. And I want that to continue. And I don't want to limit somebody because they live across, or put them behind somebody else who may not be, uh, uh, the person that I need. And I also don't wanna leave them out because they are across the line. So that's what I want you to understand. And also the, the language in the bill that you talked to, you came back and said that the comptroller was going to, and I wanna make sure I get it correct, what you said here. You said the comptroller was going to make sure, here's perfection, perfection. I got too many things open. Oh, God.
I just jumped into action. Luckily, the people agreed to.
Here it is, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you said that the comptroller would be the one to make sure that they are tax compliant. But, um, again, I wanna just say, when you are talking about something like that, um, someplace in the bill, it should be defined what tax compliance is. And you're saying, well, that's gonna be determined by the comptroller. I, that's not good, uh, legislative, uh, uh, writing for me, or, uh, a good way for a board bill to, to be. We should either reference outright, tax compliance means da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, or tax compliance will be determined by the comptroller, not just say tax compliance, because that leaves too much open to interpretation. And then, um, if it is gonna be determined by the comptroller, then I wanna know how the comptroller determines that before I will put this kind of amendment into legislation. And that's what my problem with that is. But overall, like I said, I've been doing this for a long, long time. And the black contractors that have met with me, and the women and Hispanic or Asian, they're not looking to be limited because they may live a few, uh, uh, blocks outside the city of St. Louis. And I don't wanna do that. And especially, I don't wanna do this at this time, when time is of the essence, to get my neighborhood. And you have all but one of my neighborhoods listed in this list of, uh, uh, impacted communities. So that is not what I'm looking for at this point. I think we can get qualified, good people, both in the city and outside the city. And we wanna make sure we do not un, um, unfortunately leave people out. And I will be talking to the comptroller herself after this, uh, conversation to see what she, how is she going to enforce that, uh, and that, 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 uh, particular verbiage when you start talking about, uh, if they have, uh, paid their taxes? I wanna know if that is something that you have to have all your taxes paid, or could you be on a plan? Because I know sometimes people are allowed to be on a plan. That I need to know before I will put this, put this kinda language in this particular bill. And I just want you to know, um, if you are still really insisted upon this bill, or could this be something that could be pulled back?
Point well taken, Alderwoman. Um, I, what I was saying earlier about the comptroller's office, she actually has a, they have a tax compliance form, so I can get that in and send it to you. That's already in their process, so I don't think she would change any of that criteria. Um, and then also, um, not just to you, but also to Alderwoman, Alderlady of the 10th who mentioned earlier, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, obviously, as you mentioned too, we should always be mindful of minority women, business entrepreneurs, and making it easier for them to be able to qualify for our funds and to do business in our city, that, you know, the, like, the amendment doesn't say anything about black or white or anything like that, uh, because that wasn't my intention. My intention was just to support city businesses. Um, I do think at this point, um, I do have some communication from the mayor's office that says that, you know, we can work on the RFP, uh, because they do very much are interested in making sure that city folks do, are able to access these funds. So I don't have a problem with withdrawing the amendment.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So are you requesting to withdraw amendment number six?
Yes.
Uh, Alderwoman from the 10th, will you withdraw your second? Okay. Anything further, Alderwoman from the 7th?
No.
Then I will introduce, uh, Alderman from the 14th. You are now recognized on Board Bill 31 as amended. On the floor, if you wanna make that perfection ask. Since it's been amended, you now need to request perfection of the amended bill.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. I move to perfect Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we perfect Board Bill 31 as amended. Floor, Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Um, I think I, in my opening, I stated why this, uh, is important. Um, ultimately, again, it's, it's to, it's to get relief out to, uh, people that need it the most. And like I said at the beginning, 30 million is not enough. Um, glad that we do have some FEMA support coming. We got some funding from the state coming. But, um, in, in the time of, uh, when residents was talking about what the city was doing, and we was doing a lot outside of legislation, I, I mean, I want to commend the Alders from the impacted areas, uh, from the 9th, from the 10th, elevated 11th, from the 12th and the 13th, um, that still was doing work. Uh, I think sometimes people just, uh, think we just do legislation, but there was actually boots on the ground every single day in the community, trying to help, uh, individuals. But, uh, I think this is another unified front between, uh, the mayor's office, the president's office and the board, um, to try to make sure that, uh, we're moving the ball forward and we're continuing to keep the momentum going, and showing that we got stake in the game. When the mayor was up in Jefferson City, she mentioned to the budget committee, hey, we appreciate the money that's coming from the state, we appreciate the money coming from the federal government, but we're also putting stake in the game by, uh, using some of the Rams' money to make sure that we can set up programs to try to start to fill in the gap where FEMA can't or where the state can't, and to be able to move funds a little quicker. Uh, so with that, Madam President, I would open up for any questions on Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
Alderwoman from the 12th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. If the Alderman from the 14th would yield?
The Alderman from the 14th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
I will.
Okay, Alderman, I would like to take you to page four of seven. Um, and you have a litany of things that can be, uh, assisted by the Disaster Relief Fund. But one of the things I don't see, and I must, maybe I missed it, I don't see anything, uh, relating to demolition. Is that gonna be another part? And the reason why I'm asking this is because I have several households where the house itself is still standing, but the house next door fell on the household. And so these are gonna have to be priority demolitions before that impacts negatively the household next to it. And is that, was there a reason why we didn't put demolition anyplace in here?
Yes, ma'am, because, uh, I think we talked about this when we were talking about the budget last week. We have a lot of money right now, um, from, uh, SLDC, I wanna say over millions of dollars to do demo. And then there's even money within our, uh, building division to do demo. Uh, so we didn't want to also, uh, put it in here, uh, to, um, also say demo when we already have pots of funds for demo, uh, demolition that, like I say, I know, um, I forget the organization that former Mayor Francis Slay, uh, sits on as a board, but the state appropriated, um, millions of dollars for demolition, uh, for programs, which I know that the mayor is already taking significant steps to start to do demo on LRA properties. But we already had a pot of money for this, understanding that 30 million's not a lot, and we didn't want to, uh, put that in this pot when we have two pots already for demolition, uh, for the city of St. Louis.
Okay, all right, um, and another thing, we keep talking about tenants' funds, and I wanna throw out another, uh, phrase, which is displaced persons, because there are people who live in a household where the person is the tenant, there are people who may live in a household where the person is the owner, but they still get displaced, and it seem like that we have, uh, kinda left them out of that conversation. And so I was hoping at some point, we may have a conversation about changing the ten, the term in, in, um, impacted tenant fund to maybe displaced persons. I, especially as it relates to this particular tornado, because you're displaced if you lived with someone, but you were not the legal tenant, and you still, we still have to find places for you. Is that something that we, uh, talked about at all?
Yes.
And I'll give you an example, I have, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead and answer.
No, I was gonna say, and also about the demo, there's $5 million in the demo fund, um, that just alone outside of, um, this fund. But yes, in the, in the legislation, we do talk about impa, impacted tenants, uh, but we also don't limit it there. And I know that's been conversations that I've been having with the mayor, uh, about, uh, potentially also using the money not just for tenants. On page three, section C, uh, that's when we talk about number I, uh, stabilizing households impacted by the tornado to prevent homelessness and displacement. So, uh, these funds are also eligible to not just help tenants, which we have a fund for that, that we will, um, it's a separate fund, which some of this money can be used for tenants. But this fund also can be used to ensure that nobody, no matter if you're a tenant, a homeowner, a senior, a, a first-time home buyer, uh, that these funds can be used to not ensure that you are displaced, a period.
Okay, that, and so as long as we, um, understand that everybody's not a tenant or a homeowner, so that's, I, I'm reading that, and that does help dispel my fears that there will be somebody that would not be addressed. Okay, I also have a question on page five of seven. Line seven, I'm sorry, something's gotten in my eye, okay? Okay, so it talks about providing capital for initiatives led by not-for-profit organizations that address gaps in resident-funded tornado response and recovery, such as, but not limited to staffing, temporary shelters, warehousing needs, technology. Could you explain that to me a little bit more, please?
Yes, ma'am, so ultimately that these funds can also be used, knowing that the city don't have, uh, the capacity to do everything. You know, we have the ability to do, like you said, demolition. We have the ability, um, to do certain things through our department. But, uh, some non-for-profits have more experience and have the staffing and expertise to be able to help with temporary shelters, to be able to help with warehousing space and storage that the city does not own, uh, and that have the staffing capacity, um, that many of them that have already been out on the ground, out on the ground doing the work. So E on page five, E just states that these funds also can be used to support, uh, you know, amazing organizations like Diamond Divas, that have a warehouse space and that has a contract with Walmart, uh, where they're able to, uh, bring goods into a warehouse to be able to make sure that those goods are distributed out to community members when the city of St. Louis don't have a warehouse of goods. So, um, it's just another eligible use where these funds can be able to help, uh, a lot of the groups that are also doing work out there on the ground. Uh, we're, we're not limiting that this is, uh, funds only for the city of St. Louis, but it can also, uh, be used for, uh, nonprofit organizations that are addressing the gaps that maybe the city does not have the ability to address.
And do you anticipate that when these non-for-profits and nonprofits, uh, organizations are awarded contracts, that we have, uh, a first, uh, list of who they are?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm still irritated with the, uh, treasurer for not releasing who got the $500, and he doesn't know, doesn't understand how many people that I know are still irritated for him, because there should be no secrets from the members of the Board of Aldermen. Um, and also, uh, will, they will have to, of course, give some kind of a report about what they're doing and what their funds are expended for, even though they put for, they're gonna be part of a contract, is that how you envision it? That they would be awarded a contract to do certain things?
Yes, they would be part of a.
What they're gonna do?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll have to go through the RFP, and hopefully, uh, the members of ENA will make sure that, uh, that RFP will make sure that that RFP have reporting. And then on page six of seven, we put in there that usually sometimes we have legislation talk about how they must come in front of the board on an annual basis, so yearly. But one of the things that the Alderman from the 9th actually put in was that, in the mayor's office, and they've agreed, is that the mayor's office will have to come in front of the budget committee monthly detailing every expenditure from this tornado disaster relief, relative data, and numbers of individuals that have been served by this outcome, so that we at the Board of Alderman is still being a check and balance. And while we're giving the mayor a lot of discretion for this fund, and ENA being the body that votes on it, that we still are the check and balance to make sure that these funds aren't just going willy-nilly. And I'm not saying that, believing that that will happen. But we did make sure that we put a check and balance that the administration shall provide a monthly report to the budget committee detailing expenditures from the tornado relief. And I also look at that as not just a report, but if having to call them in, I know we're talking to members on the, well, let me not say that, but I would say I believe that the budget committee, if we need to call anybody in from the mayor's office, that with this last budget session, it's been a great partnership that, going off the track record, that they will come in if we have questions, or if any other members of the Board of Alderman have questions, where I will make sure as the chair that those reports not only available to the budget committee, but are available to the whole Board of Alderman, no matter if you sit on the committee or not.
Okay. And I will say good luck to you with that, because the charter already requires every department to give us a report. And for years and years and years, I have said, the Alderman now, who is of the third, will tell you, they don't do it. Very few people do it. I do agree with you that this mayor has been very good at working with people and so calling you up and texting you, hey, what do you think about this? So I am very, I'm not pleasantly surprised, because I've always had a good relationship for the last 10 years with this mayor, but she has been above and beyond reproach to me as far as working with people and making sure that people were included. So I commend her on that. I do have a question about page five, line 16. So the city is going to get, be able to take some of the money out for disaster-related efforts, administrative calls? So I kind of feel some kind of way about that, because although we may not know that it's going to be a tornado, we actually have a whole division set up to look at disasters, be it flood, tornado, whatever. So in our budget, it seems like we should have money that provides for that. So I feel weird taking money to pay the city employees, and we already pay the city employees. So could you explain that to me?
Yes, ma'am. I think, and I know this was legislation that we have done with other funds, not necessarily to pay city employees, as city staff and departments are utilizing overtime and different expenditures from this fund, or not from this fund, from their general revenue due to this tornado relief, this 5% is to be able to kind of help the fund balance on an annual basis, because a lot of the funds, I wouldn't say are being depleted at the moment, but I know I've talked with some departments where, you know, our city staff has been working seven days a week overtime and don't want to make sure that we get to a spot where they are in the red and multiple departments are in the red. So it limits it that some of this money can just be used to balance a little bit of those budgets as they are, as they're going through it. Forestry's been out seven days a week, refuse been out seven days a week, parks have been out, our police department has been out, and those funds are starting to tick up. So it's not really to pay staff, but more towards that line 17 to 18, to fund the balance on an annual basis. But staff is in their balance, but yes.
So what I would like to see, I hope that we don't use the money. I hope that we can use some of the federal monies or some other funds, the state monies for this. And we should have a, some kind of balance that we should continue, because we have disasters in this area. And when you have a disaster, there will be a lot of overtime and things that you need to address. So I'm hoping that we can find a way not to use this fund and put it all toward the impacted areas, because $30 million, if people think that's a lot, that's no money. I continue to say, in three neighborhoods, I did $50 million worth of development. So when you talk about 30 million spread over all these neighborhoods, that's not a lot of money. And so I'm hoping that we don't have to use that money.
And I echo you, hopefully that we'll be able to use funds from other pots, but wanted to bake that in the language, so it's not restricted, but won't be, hopefully, the first go-to.
Right. And I will also say that the mayor's been very, she's interacting with people, and she's agreed that her staff should give you a monthly report. But sometimes when you're in the act of getting things done, I would say if they did every other month, that would be good for me, because I would prefer them out there getting things done and making sure that my neighborhoods get put back together. That's great if they can do that, but I won't be mad if they are upset if they can only do it every two months instead of every month, as long as they're getting the work done, and they have been doing a fantastic job. We didn't, I myself couldn't even put out information to my community, because I didn't have any electricity for a long time. I know the Alderwoman from the 11th house has been impacted greatly. I was fortunate that didn't happen to my house, but parts of my fences and things like that, it did. So I appreciate the mayor being willing to give us a monthly report, but I'd be satisfied if it was every two months. Thank you, Alderman from the 14th. I appreciate you responding to my questions.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to just express my gratitude to the Alderman for bringing this bill. I think it's a great bill, and I hope that, although it's a drop in the hat, I hope that we can get people who are impacted some relief. I also want to remind people where this money came from. This is interest on the Rams money. And months ago, we were sitting here talking about what to do with the principal from the Rams fund. And had we, had we spent all of those funds on those various projects, we may not have these funds to help people. And this isn't the last time that we're going to have a rainy day in St. Louis, unfortunately. But I think if we, if we look at this and we're smart about it, we're going to have funds like this for the next rainy day. And I think that this exact bill is a testament to why we need to protect that principal. And that way, in moving forward, we'll be able to help people out with additional funds without touching the principal. It's terribly unfortunate why we're having this conversation, but I think it's a conversation that we have to have moving forward about how we have these funds and the need to create an endowment or a trust with these funds, so that the next time something happens, that we will have additional funds to get out to people quickly and not have to rely on the state, not have to rely on the federal government. We can be nimble with our own funds, and that's just a testament to why we need to create an endowment with that principal. And I'm very excited, like I said, that we have the ability to get funds out to people quickly as far as the legislative process goes. And I thank you all for your work on this, and with that, I'll yield.
Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you, President Green. I don't have any question. I was just contemplating on the demo again, because I just want to ask you, because you played a part in this bill with this demolition, and I heard Alderwoman Tyus talking about the demolition, and then they kept saying that they have money already allocated from the previous Mayor Francis Slay brought money from state, and then the previous mayor had money allocated. But I guess my question, with the impact of this tornado, is that going to be enough dollars, one? And I'm, and I say take from the 30 million, I'm just being in a reality mindset here. Is that going to be enough money to accommodate those areas? And we already had a listing of buildings that had to come down. So that was my question. How are we going to, you know, maneuver that?
You wanting to inquire of the Alderman from the 14th?
No, I was inquiring of you.
Oh. Well, I'm not supposed to respond to questions from the dais, but I will say that I think Alderman from the 14th does have that, that list of funds, if you want to inquire of him.
Okay, Alderman of the 14th, will you yield a question?
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. So what my fear is, and I don't want to sound like the wet blanket, but I keep thinking back to say, we need to make sure that we are doing good, taking care of business. We do have money set aside for demolition, and then we have other money from the building division set aside for demolition. But with a tornado hitting our areas, is this going to be enough? And we already had a list of buildings, all of the Alderpeople, especially North St. Louis, because it was my understanding that money Francis Slay had was explicitly for North St. Louis. So is that enough to accommodate since we have been encountered with this tornado?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll be honest with you. I think before the tornado, Northside needed help. The tornado only ripped off a Band-Aid to show how that Northside was in life support. This 30 million is not going to be enough, the 100 million from the state's not going to be enough, the 74 million from FEMA's not going to be enough. We're talking about a damage over 1.6 billion, some people say, some people saving 2 billion. And I, you know, I don't want to sell no hopes and dreams and say, you know, it's going to be enough. I think we're going to have to, we're going to be assessing this for years to come. I do think the 5 million, especially not coming from the Rams money, is a lot of money that we honestly haven't been tapping into for the demo, and now we're starting to do it because of this tornado. And I'm sure if we have to move more money around, ENA does it all the, all year, if they have to move more money around from the budget committee to ensure that there's more money in the tornado relief pocket for demos that they will. But ultimately, you know, I don't, I don't think it's ever going to be enough. And if we can go to, I will say it also in the bill, it talks about included but not limited to. So if we end up needing to use some of this money for the tornado disaster relief for demos, that is a possibility, because there is a section of the bill that say where these funds are included but not limited to other uses of funds that would go to the impacted areas to make sure that we keep stable housing. Stable housing can be making sure that we do not have demolition. But I just want to ask, maybe did you have like any verbiage or wording that you would maybe like to see that could be added to just ensure that we're doing the right thing when it comes to funding for demos? I think you're on mute, Alderlady.
I can work with you for us to look at that. I'm just nervous, because with the tornado, it has just put a double impact on North St. Louis.
Okay, I think, would you, I think even if we, so it says limited, included but not limited to, I think one of the eligible uses, we can also like add the word demo, so that if we need to put or tap into a little bit of this money, even though 5 million is a lot, that is just another eligible use, and it does not lock the doors out for demolition.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would offer a friendly amendment in eligible uses on page four, line 13, that also, or actually 14, where it says, after home repair, comma, and, or home repair, comma, demo, and preserving of property.
Okay, that's fine.
There's been a motion, is there a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we adopt amendment number, calling it seven.
Six. Oh, I don't, no.
Six was withdrawn. So we'll call it number seven. Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Hello?
Alderwoman from the-
I had my hand up, because I was, okay, so to me, we should have also added demolition under section on page four, line nine, I'm sorry, line eight, right under that, where we talk about addressing the needs and outlining what we could address the needs, demolition should have been adding, added there. But it'll be fine, because I don't think that this initial $30 million is going to be enough. And I'm going to disagree with the Alderman from the 4th about saving money at the expense of North St. Louis. I'm glad we have the Rams money. I'm glad that we put it on the informal calendar, but we will need to, and I was told that that would not be the only money, just the interest, that we will need to dip into probably the principal of the Rams money, and I'm not saying all of it, because part of the problem we had is that you, most people don't have, most of the city doesn't have, is we have all these properties of LRA that should have been demolished a long time ago, and now they are in states of collapse, and they're right next to people's homes, and they've run people out of the community. And I want to say Francis Slay ought to be leading, given all the money he can, because he's part of the problem that created the problems in much of North St. Louis in the first place with his horrible policies. So he ought to be leading getting money here. And so I absolutely am opposed to putting money up without getting these buildings torn down. They are dangerous. In case you haven't been over there, many of them are city-owned. I hope before we do anything, that we get rid of these city-owned properties, and I don't care if we got to spend 20 million down, they should come down, because then you can do development in North St. Louis. And when they come down, they ought to be done so that you are anticipating development, so you should not be burying this rubbish. You should be clearing it out so that we are ready to rebuild St. Louis. And that's another thing that we've allowed people to do. Most of LRA properties are properties that we've torn down or demolished. We did, we did get, dig up a hole, and we put it in there, and if you ever want to do development, you now got to spend extra money, and you got to spend extra time to get rid of that. And this is an excellent time for us to do this the correct way, and that is to demolish all the buildings that we can, that need to. Nobody, so anybody who's out there saying, we're doing the team four plan, we are not. I have it, I've read it. What we're doing is removing dangerous buildings that have been in our community for a long time, that are next to people's houses, that have crashed on occupied houses, and we need to do that. And I don't think this initial $30 million will be enough, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse to death, because I will bring another bill to spend some more of that Rams fund, because some of that stuff we've had in there is wishful thinking at this time. And I'm so glad we put the entire amount on informal, because you never know what's going to happen. I will agree with Alderman from the 4th, we should establish a fund. I just don't think we can establish it all at once or on the backs of North St. Louis. That is the problem. LRA has been on the back of, properties have been on the backs of North St. Louis residents and running the residents out, because they are tired of having to deal with them. So I look forward to another bill about demolition, a comprehensive bill that we, once and for all, clean up North St. Louis and the vacant properties that no one caused to happen. This happened with an administration that was insensitive to my community and is sensitive to North St. Louis on four terms under Francis Slay. This is when this all started to happen. It was not like this before this, and we ought to be ashamed that we let a part of the city live with vacant, dangerous buildings right next to occupied buildings like this. They should have been torn down a long time ago.
Need further discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th, did you have your hand up? Alderwoman from the 13th, did you have your hand up again?
I just need to ask, could I ask a question to the Alderman of the 14th?
The Alderman from the 14th yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the 13th.
I do.
Alderman, doesn't LRA have dollars also for demolition?
Yes, ma'am, I brought it up in inquiry with the Alderwoman from the 12th. They have about 5 million dollars to be able to do demolition on top of funds that is in the budgeted for FY '26 budget year for the Building Division. But to your question, yes, they have about 5 million dollars.
So we have LRA, we have Building Division, and then we have the funds that Francis Slay brought down, and do you know how much that is?
That, that fund for Francis Slay is tied to the, the Building Division. That's the money that they are using for the Building Division is the funds from LRA, from the mayor's, I mean, from Francis Slay. Yes, so I just wanted to get confirmation. So that 5 million that we got from the state, that was directed to LRA, so LRA is working to use those funds to do demos. There's only two pots, LRA, the Board of, the Budget Division, or not Budget, the Building Division for demo, and then we just added a friendly amendment that you offered, which we put Rams money could also be used.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm kind of concerned because now I'm hearing, so we have 11 million dollars for demo, correct?
5 million.
Five, so-
From LRA, 5 million or whatever is in the, I don't have the budget line item from the Building Division of how much money having demos, to do demos throughout the city, that and then, like I say, we just added Rams money as well.
Okay, all right. I, I guess I'm just trying to count the dollars to see where we were. I mean, as the Alderwoman from the 12th said, it stills not enough money. And so those dollars should have been dispensed before to get those buildings down, so that's what I was just concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, then Alderman from the 14th, you're recognized to close on Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I probably said this a lot, I'll say it again, I agree, 30 million is not enough. I would love to maybe in the near future, but, you know, tap into more Rams money, but we'll have that conversation later. But ultimately, I do want to say again, I appreciate President Green for, when it came up with idea, standing ready to say yes, this is a start. And even then, when we had those conversations, we made it very clear the interest was not going to be enough. I want to thank the mayor's office for being collaborative in this process to also be supportive of this board bill, to start to get direct relief to people that need it the most. And again, we can continue to say, it's not enough. Northside has been on life support before this tornado and this has only just shown why we need even more money to North St. Louis in every single pot that there is, from the state, federal, and locally. Also want to thank every single one of my colleagues and especially the Alders from the impacted areas that provided language on this legislation to ensure that we're not just coming up with our own ideas down at the board, but we're hearing from Alders that represent individuals that have been impacted. And every single Alder from the 9th going all the way to the 13th have just been extremely helpful in this process to make sure that their voice is heard along the way. Want to thank the Comptroller, she added amendment to make sure if these funds are not being used properly, that there's clawback. And again, I think what you're seeing over the last few weeks is true collaboration and folks trying to work together to help the people that's been impacted the most, putting our own egos, putting our own views on things aside and just trying to come together, together, and do as much as possible. And just glad and honored, it sucks that this tornado has kind of brought us together in this way, but there's not one person at this board that I'm not been thrilled to work with over these last few weeks. So with that, Madam President, I close on Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we perfect Board Bill 31 as amended on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 21, one as amended in committee.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill 21.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Board Bills, the third reading and finally passage on Board Bills Consent Calendar.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 14th, that we adopt the third reading and passage of Board Bills on the Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
Board Bill One as amended in committee, sponsored by President Green, Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Velazquez, and Alder, I'm sorry, Alderman Devotee. In ordinance, make an appropriation for the payment interest expenses and principal of the city's bond indebtedness, establishing city tax rates, make an appropriation for the current year expenses of city government containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the third read and final passage of Board Bill One as amended in committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move for the final passage of Board Bill One as amended in committee.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill One as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Board Bill One is our FY '26 budget that, over the last month, the Budget Committee had dived deep into. Last week, I talked about several of the changes, I don't have them all here, but every single Alder person had a weigh-in and input on it. I know some very key ones was making sure that we added more money into SEMA for a position, that was a recommendation by the Alderman from the 9th. The Alderwoman from the 7th put money into SEMA software program. The Alderman from the 5th moved some money around to make sure that we pay our city councilors more, knowing that we don't, we don't pay in any department a lot, but especially lawyers are usually poached to go to different firms. I moved some money around in the Parks Department to make sure that we move for paid performance to give them utility workers. Alderwoman from the 12th, I think you need to go on mute, but, Alderwoman from the 12th, you need to go on mute. But I'm, you're fine, you're fine. Just really proud of this Budget Committee, you know, during the, kind of the middle of this Budget Committee, we all had a go, or the Budget Committee had a go, having four public opportunities for the, four ways that the opportunities can weigh in, we only had three, because in the middle of the budget process, the tornado happened and we had to cancel our second public meeting. But thanks to the president's office and Sam Wabi and the president's office for helping, I probably butchered his last name, but helping set up access for the library to make sure that people had an opportunity to testify. We at least were able to have three of those meetings. And I want to say, this budget year, being on the Budget Committee, this year, we've not only moved the most money around than we did the previous year, but once we get the budget done today, at least in my timeline of being here at the Board of Aldermen, this is the third budget, this will be the fastest that we ever got a budget done and sent over to the mayor's desk. So to Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderman Browning, and Alderman Devotee, who is new Alder, and to Caitlin and Matt and Ryan and all the staff, really appreciate their help on this in being able to get this budget done. Thank you.
Need further discussion. Alderwoman from the 11th.
I wanted to know if this board could, Board Bill could be embanked.
We unfortunately cannot do that since it is on third reading, we would have needed to do it during perfection. Not a problem. Alderwoman from the 12th.
I can answer her question, absolutely not. It cannot be embanked. In fact, I think we had four or five noes from last time. In case she doesn't know, I don't vote for, and I said this before, I don't vote for budgets, having done it for a lot of ti- years. Some of the reasons, I hate the way we pay our people, we don't pay them enough. I'm glad that the city councilors got more money, but there are other people that did not get money that deserve it. When I used to be the Chair of Public Employees, I actually had a study commissioning done, and it's embarrassing what we pay our employees, and that's why we don't have enough people in any jobs just about. We are short in everything that we need, from parks and recreations to streets to just any other thing, so. And it's also always some other things that are up in the budget that I don't agree with, so I will be asking for a roll call so I can vote no. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the 14th, you're recognized to close on Board Bill One as amended in committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Again, I just want to thank the Budget Committee. This is a daunting task of meeting every single day and some of these meetings went three, four hours. So I think we are in a better spot when it comes to the budget. I totally agree, we do not pay our city workers what they deserve. It is a little complicated for some city employees to do that through budget because they are under contract and a lot of those payment and discussions happen with their union and, and the city of St. Louis. So definitely agree with Alderwoman from the 12th and I think many Alder people that we do not pay them enough. It does get a little dicey for, you know, like our correctional officers, our police officers and other departments that are under contract so that we don't, you know, mess with that. But again, really proud of everybody on the Budget Committee and I know it's been a call for roll call, which always happens on third reading, so I hope we send a strong budget off to the mayor's desk so that she can sign it and I appreciate everybody's input, questions during this process. Thank you, and I close.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill One as amended in committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg.
Nope.
Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion.
Nope.
Alderman Devotee.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Nine aye votes and five no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 14th to third read and finally pass Board Bill One as amended in committee. Reported, the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill 21, one as amended in committee.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that these be from law. Alderwoman from the 13th, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 42.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion, suspend rules, introduce Resolution 42.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 13th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 42. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Aye. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. 13 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 13th, if you could please place Resolution 42 on the first reading of resolutions.
So noted.
First reading of resolutions and reference to committees.
Resolution 42, a resolution supporting the St. Louis Job Corps Center and urging continued, continued federal funding for the Job Corps Program.
Alderwoman-
Sponsored by Alderwoman Pamela Boyd.
Alderwoman from the 13th, you are recognized on Resolution 42.
Thank you, Madam President and the board. I am asking for favorable consideration for our Resolution 42 because as we know, the president has, and I, when I did the research, he has paused the Job Corps Program. And so we are asking him to review this and start this program back up because it's critical in our community and not only empower the people and families within these communities to make it where they were able to get jobs, be viable citizens within the community, and it would help to build the workforce that we have in the community. And so on that note, I'll take any questions.
Would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes, please, thank you, I'm sorry.
Here are no objection to unanimous consent. Alderwoman, you can now make the motion to adopt Resolution 41, or 42, sorry.
I'd ask to adopt Resolution 42.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 13th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we adopt Resolution 42. Is there any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 11th.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. I was so shocked to hear about this a couple of weeks ago on a Friday evening, I got a call from Bishop Robinson telling me that this thing had happened and they were scrambling to get their, their students housed somewhere. I, first of all, I do want to move to have this bill embanked.
Second.
A resolution embanked, thank you.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the 11th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we make Resolution 42 embanked. Is there any discussion on the motion to embank? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. This action by the president has such devastating and far-reaching effects all across our country. One estimate I heard is that as many as 50,000 people will be affected by this. This will serve to grow our unhoused community. We have many young people who are participating in Job Corps programs. This is the only home they have right now as they receive valuable life skills, training, vocational skills in order to jumpstart their lives and their careers. And our country is better for having programs such as Job Corps. Um it's sad to say, I don't even know where this man's head is, but this is not something that is going to be beneficial to us as a country. It's definitely going to hurt uh our communities. My ward has one of the Job Corps uh programs in it as well as the thirteenth ward. And um it's, it's so sad. Uh we just were with Job Corps uh I guess about a month ago. Um we went as they had just completed um a ceremony uh so that they were setting up their own like student government uh program, their Learning Roberts Rules. And to see the pride that these young people had in their accomplishments and how they were complimentary towards each other and supportive of each other. And now for them to be thrust into a situation where they really don't know where they're going to go, where they're going to live. A, a very high number of those young people have no secondary home to go to. And so these numbers of unhoused people across our nation are about to grow if this program is not kept in place and maintained for the good of us all. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Aye. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I echo what the uh Alderwoman from the eleventh uh said. For all people who want to see young people, productive young people, I don't even understand how anybody would want to stop anything like this. I mean, we want an armed force, but we also want a, a working force. We want educated force. We want people who get in trouble, get another chance without having to be locked up. Job Corps does a lot of this. I mean, they are right there in the thick of things. For them to be caught up in this political game is shameful. I would tell people if you don't, well, it's too late now, right now, because it's been paused, but if you had had a chance to go to Job Corps, you would have been very impressed. Um when I was an attorney with the Public Defenders, one of my go-to things was when the kids got in trouble, because I also was a juvenile, was to find a way to get them placed in Job Corps. Sometimes I couldn't find St. Louis, we might find Idaho. But it was always a better alternative than incarceration. And the kids learn skills, workforce, how to get along with other people, the things that we want children to learn, our young folks to learn. And also, for those people who are so critical of people coming from certain commi- communities, this is a way for you to see an improvement in the, the kids that you're so critical of because they do get another chance to make it right and to do the things that they should be doing. Um when you're young, you make mistakes sometimes, and this is a place that you can go, and it does not have to be incarceration. And I would uh implore the President and our bipartisan uh uh representatives, our, our Congressman who is a Democrat, and our two U.S. Senators who are Republicans to really um employ the President not to keep this program paused and not to let it get caught up in some I don't even know what he, you're so mad at diversity, equity, and inclusion that you are having. I'm hoping that it's unintended consequence because it would be a shame that it's intended consequence that you want to close down a program like this that is so successful. And I would ask if the sponsor would ask that the uh resolution be read.
Yes, ma'am. I will. I have no problem with that.
Madam Clerk, if you could please read the resolution.
Forty-two, a resolution supporting the St. Louis Job Corps Center, Job Corps Center urging continued federal funding for the Job Corps Program. Whereas the St. Louis City Job Corps Center provides vital career and technical education to young adults, equipping them with skills focusing empowerment, empowering American industries and necessary for gainful employment. Whereas the cen- the center has been instrumental in fostering a skilled workforce that contributes significantly to the local economy and community development and prepare American future workforce for the manufacturing industry. Whereas the St. Louis Board of Aldermen recognized the importance of Job Corps Program in offering life-changing opportunities to undeserved and disenfranchised, disenfranchised youth across diverse communities. And whereas recent federal actions have placed the continued operation of the St. Louis Job Corps Center in jeopardy, threatening the livelihood of its students and staff as well as economic stability in the region. And whereas the Board of Ald- Aldermen acknowledged the positive impact of St. Louis Job Corps Center on the community and the potential adverse effects that its closure would entail. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we hereby express its strong support for the continued operation and federal funding of St. Louis Job Corps Center and urges the Governor of Missouri, the Missouri, Missouri State Legislature, the Missouri Congressional, Congressional delegation to advocate for the preservation and funding of the Job Corps Program, recognizing its critical role in workforce development and community enrichment. The Board of Aldermen further directs the Clerk of the Board to include a copy of the resolution in the minutes of these proceedings and transmit a copy of this resolution to the Governor of Missouri, the members of the Missouri State Legislature, and the Missouri Congressional delegation. Introduced this thirteenth day of June twenty twenty-five by the Honorable Pam Boyd. Co-sponsors include Ms. President Megan Green, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Con, Alderman Orion, Alderman Devotee, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Tyus, and Alderman Aldrich.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, uh Madam President and members of the board. And I want to uh publicly thank the Carpenters Union and Roger Moore of Job Corps who did reach out to me, and we did have intense conversations about uh this resolution and how critical it is and what the, as uh the Alder people are saying, the President needs to take heed to what he's doing. Because if you're saying that you're trying to rebuild the workforce and then you take away the talents of the people that can be the workforce, you're contradictory in what your mission is. So again, I renew my motion and I, and I ask for favorable consideration.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh that we adopt Resolution Number Forty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item twenty-three miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item twenty-five announcements.
Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, special full board meeting in the chambers at ten a.m. Hertz will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at eleven a.m. Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the office will be closed in honor of Juneteenth holiday. That is the extent of the announcements.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on, or sorry, jumping ahead. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh first, I would like to thank uh Ms. Aura, who is our clerk, who organized all of us wearing these fabulous Board of Aldermen shirts as well as organize uh today after the Board of Aldermen uh staff. And if anybody want to join the staff, they will be at fifty-one eighty-three, eighty-three, eighty-three Raymond Avenue, Youth and Need St. Louis Early Learning Program Academy School. Uh where over uh the last few days, they have been, if you've been here in the Kennedy or in the leisure room, they have been packing um goodie bags and, and help bags for people where they plan to go out to all the impacted wards with certain items, hydrating items, toilet paper, face towel, you know, just trying to do their part in this disaster relief. They will be starting in the tenth ward, and I know each week they'll be going to every impacted uh ward to try to give back to people that have um that, that need some support. So I just want to thank Ms. Aura and all the staff at the Board of Aldermen uh for uh doing y'all part and trying to help out for people that have been impacted by this storm. Thank you all so much. And let's give them a round of applause from the Board of Aldermen for the work that they've been doing. That's all I got.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Madam President and the board. I wanted to make sure that uh I announced uh we have a public meeting at Walnut Park Library at fifty-seven sixty West Florissant on Wednesday, June the eighteenth, from four-thirty to sixteen, from sixteen to six-thirty. And it's the West Florissant Avenue Traffic Safety Study. And so our residents within the uh thirteen, twelfth, and eleventh ward should be in attendance so they can give their input.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to announce that tomorrow, June fourteenth, from twelve to three p.m., the Urban League will do its large-scale community giveaway. If you're needing resources, please get to the Urban League at fourteen oh eight North Kings Highway Boulevard tomorrow between noon and three p.m. Also, tomorrow is National Bourbon Day, and please forgive me because our meeting ran so long. Last night, I did not get out to get you all your little bottles of bourbon. So we will celebrate National Bourbon Day on our next full Board of Aldermen meeting. Drink responsibly. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce that we, I will be calling a Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee meeting for Wednesday, uh the eighteenth at its usual time of three thirty p.m. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um I don't know if he's still watching, but I definitely want to announce a Happy Father's Day to any dads that are watching and my dad who might be watching still. Um and then I definitely wanted to, you know, obviously thank every dad that is um in the works and making sure that our, you know, we have the support that we need. Um and then I definitely wanted to also make sure that I announce the town hall that we have in the seventh ward on June eighteenth. It is themed on public safety, but specifically a state takeover of the St. Louis Metropolitan uh Police Department, and we will have the Director of Policy from the Mayor's Office, President Green, um State Representative Elizabeth Fuchis, and um, you know, it's, and Chief Tracy Roberts. So it'll be a full conversation. I know right now amongst residents, there are especially a lot of questions about ICE and about certain LGBTQ things and about certain reproductive justice things. So instead of me trying to uh fill it in, I'm going to bring the folks who can bring those things right to you. And um Jamala Rogers will be joining us as well. Um both herself and President Green have lawsuits out against the state for taking over control of police departments, so they will be there to speak directly and give updates to those efforts. And from five thirty to six, we will have parking ticket forgiveness. So if you have any parking tickets, um they will waive the late fees and uh penalties, and you will pay the original amount. And we will have childcare and refreshments as always.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I too, uh you all, our staff and the team that's come together and is out on the ground right now as we speak with resources. Again, many of us will be joining them after, and the Academy Sherman Park Neighborhood Association and Ms. Rhonda and the work that they've been doing to collaborate to be able to reach other community on the ground where they are. I appreciate you all. Thank you. I want to also make sure that we uplift Juneteenth celebrations that are kicking off this weekend uh in Fountain Park, starts tonight, it goes the thirteenth through the fifteenth. Uh it's their Juneteenth Freedom Celebration. There are activities going on for the next three days uh to uplift the spirit of Juneteenth as well as on Delmar in the East Loop. There's the East Loop starting off us, Juneteenth Celebration, starting off with a five K reconciliation run uh tomorrow morning, and then there's affairs, bands, food, um and celebration going on over there as well. I also want to make sure um for the public knowledge, to make sure they know rather, that uh Mayor Spencer signed Executive Order eighty-five, which waives the twenty-five percent insurance claim holdback for property owners that were impacted by uh the path of this tornado on May sixteen. So that executive order was signed yesterday. If you need more information about that, you can go to the city website, reach out to any of us to make sure that you are able to get your full relief from your insurance. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everybody that we are still collecting supplies for um areas affected by the tornado in South City at Power Creative at three-two-two-one Oak Hill. We have a drive going from eight to five p.m. today and all day tomorrow, so if folks want to drop uh things by, uh we will make sure they get to community organizations, including the Freedom Community Center and the Ungun Institute.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President. All members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five in the Board of Aldermen chambers at ten a.m. for a special session.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh that we adjourn until Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, in the Board of Aldermen chambers at ten a.m. for a special session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.